Right, hereby convene the regular meeting of the Grosse Lake Township Board of Trustees. The time is 7:00 PM and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start with some additions and deletions. So, the first addition would be adding action item number nine, which would be a resolution for right of refusal to purchase a tax foreclosed property. You can find that down at the bottom of your board packet before the discussion items. And what that is, is a piece of, I need a second, actually.
Second.
Okay, it's a piece of property on West River Road? On West River Road, that's, it's just property. It's been tax foreclosed by the county. So if we don't accept it, it will go to public auction. So, any discussion on adding that to the agenda?
I should support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The second addition would be to add to the consent agenda, consent agenda item number four, which is to decommission and sell a GIPD vehicle 16-2.
Support.
Second.
Is there any, do you have any comments on that, Margaret? So it'll be on consent agenda, which means it will not come up as an action item. So it won't be open for discussion again.
Yeah, so we have a vehicle that it just, as much as the officer who has driven it loves it, it's just well past the point of logical repair. It would cost more to continue to repair it than it would to decommission it. And we just don't want to use the forfeiture funds right now to purchase another at this time. We're trying to be a little more careful with those at the moment. And that's pretty much it unless anybody has any questions on it.
Any questions? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so consent agenda number four is hereby added to the agenda. And then I believe Mark wanted to make a change.
I'd like to make a motion to move action item number one, the resolution to adopt the Grosse Lake Township Master Plan update down to a discussion item. So we can all see the presentation, have a little more time to go over this. We are short one board member tonight. I would like him to be here if at all possible. And I think the residents of the island would appreciate a little more time to review this master plan before we actually adopt it.
Second. Discussion?
I guess I'd like to know, like, I think we should set a date. I think maybe the next meeting would be, should be good. I think that should give everybody enough time to go through it.
Agreed. I would actually like to push out two meetings. But if we can push out one meeting, that might work. I just think we need more time to go through it and the citizens of the island. And maybe have a presentation for the citizens to actually come to, maybe from the planning commission or from this board, this arena again here. I just don't believe enough people have had the opportunity to go through it at this time. And I'm still trying to get through some of it myself as well. I've gone through it. I'd like to go through it again. I don't want to fast track this into something that we could be making a mistake on. I'm not saying we are. I just want to, I want to have a little more time to study it myself. And I'm sure other people are feeling the same way.
I think Ross, Ross is going through it today, he's presenting it again. So, I don't know. I guess, I don't have any issue with pushing it out. I just don't know that we should continue to push it out too, too far.
I agree. I don't want to make this an ongoing effort. I know we have to have a sunset date, so to speak. But I just think right now it's not the time to make a decision on this particular action item.
Let's, so Mickey, I know you had a comment.
I was going to suggest the same thing, but what I was wondering, Ross, is if, I didn't see, I looked through every single thing you gave me, that great big stack. I read it all. What I didn't see was the master plan that's in effect right now. If we can get a redline copy of that, if it's completely too different, then at least just give us a copy of it. But, you know, I'd like to see in bold or in red what exactly is changing.
I think it's very different. I think you're just going to have to get a regular copy.
Okay, then if you give us just a copy of the one that's in effect, that would be great. Also, I'm probably going to ask for this a lot, but the executive summary, because one of the things is we asked everybody in the township their thoughts. And a lot of people took the survey. And so I'm looking for the summary that says, hey, here's what's most important to our residents and everybody that weighed in on it. And here's how we think what we did will accomplish that. So something that just shows us that we really took the action that we need to take. Okay? And then the only other thing is if we move this to a discussion item, does that mean they have to wait until the end of the agenda for Ross to present it? Because I imagine there's some people here for it.
We'll have him do a presentation on the front side.
Okay, okay.
So, so it sounds like we're good with moving it to a discussion item.
I'd like to add a remark.
Okay.
I've had thoughts similar to both sides of this. It's important that we pass it in a timely way. But it's also important that we understand it as a guide and how it works. I don't think that even two more meetings, that's four hours, is going to give us a chance to have a real feel of what this document is. What I'm getting at is I'm asking a question of whether, having the discussion nailed down now or passing it and learning about it more in the weeks that follow. And we have to do this for what I'm talking about to have meaning. Would matter. I still feel personally rushed with trying to clarify it in two weeks. I've read it, I've read most of it, I haven't read it all. But I have a lot of questions that come up that way. And there's advantages to getting it passed sooner. I'm just not sure. I think I'm more comfortable with the idea of passing this tonight and then making sure that by George, all these meetings we're talking about, that clarify things take place. And we hear from the planning commission members, we did this for this reason. This is what was going on in our mind when it happened. Then we have a chance for a feel for what this guide really means. Because if we want to have goals, we have to know where we're starting from. And that, the starting point, when we clearly understand, it seems to be important to me.
You raise a good point. It would be really helpful if more members of the planning commission were here on the night we go to approve it, just so if we have additional questions. But I would just welcome them being here as well.
I'm actually referring to having them at a meeting where we could hear what they have to say, even after it's passed. I feel that this document is something that we're going to learn more from as we use it. We're not going to be prosed at running this thing to begin with. It's going to take some time and effort.
I appreciate everybody's point of view on this. And here's the only thing that I would say that I think we need to, and I'm going to try to touch on it in my trustee report, but I think we need to start getting better at really getting people to understand that there's timing to things, there's dates for things. The planning commission has been going through this particular topic for quite a while now. I know I participated in the roundtable with the consultants. You know, so they've been reviewing this pretty consistently in their meetings. Now, there will be people that will, you know, not feel that, you know, that they could express their opinions. And I think you can during public comment. You know, there is no back and forth Q and A per se. And maybe that's something we lacked. But I felt that was done during the roundtables, where I think they struggled to get community support on that one. So I think somehow we need to try to not wait to the last minute till everybody realizes, oh, this is getting approved. And then suddenly, now we need to, you know, now we should submit our dismay or our joy over what we're finding in here. So I don't know, there's got to be a way to find a happy medium to do that. But I don't know, I think everybody, Bill, wants to, it sounds like, would rather not vote tonight if I was hearing everybody correctly. I'm prepared to vote. I've read through it a couple of times now, talked to Ross a bit. But I also want to hear from, you know, there's a lot of public comment. So to Mark's point, to the others, I think it might be a good thing, maybe if we push this to the next board meeting. I think personally, I think that's more than enough time to have everybody review it based on how long it's been available. And the finalized version has been available.
Well, the finalized version was available at the end of June?
Yes.
Okay. Well, tonight, everybody that's, we can ask questions during, the public can ask questions of Ross and during the public part of the meeting?
Yes, as long as it remains professional and concise. So, so it sounds like, so it's up to the township supervisor or whoever is the supervisor of the board at the time the agenda is made as to what goes on the agenda. Now, you can always vote to add something to the agenda if they don't put it on there. But it'll really be up to Supervisor Porzarelli as to whether this appears as an agenda item in two weeks or four weeks.
Okay.
So, so right now, the motion is to move action item number one from an action item to a discussion item, which will put it down at the bottom of the meeting. We'll still do a presentation with the community development director. And we'll do that on the front side. So, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, action item number one is moved to a discussion item. And at this point, we can approve the agenda. So I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. So I know we've got a, we've got quite a few big, important action items tonight. So I think it's important that we try to, let's just stay on topic and be concise. So we'll start with the presentation from Mark from H and H, our contracted bridge engineers. So, and I'm sure everybody that's here interested in the master plan would also be interested in bridges. So, go ahead, Mark.
Thanks for having me down. Give me the opportunity to give you a little bit of an update on the rehabilitation project and where we're at and what's been going on. Make sure we're on. Okay. The first part of our project for you guys is not actually bridge rehabilitation plans. It was getting your inspection reports, load rating reports, underwater inspections, scour analysis reports into the MyBridge Bridge Management System. You got a screenshot of that system on the screen right there. That was the first thing we needed to do. When you guys became the owner of a bridge, you are required by the federal highway and the state of Michigan to have your inspection reports up to date in the MyBridge system. Privately owned structures, it's about 50/50. As a private owner, you could tell the feds, I don't care. What are you going to do if I don't have my reports updated? You're going to threaten to take away federal funding? They don't care, they're not going to get it. The Toll Bridge had some reports that were up to date, but there was a lot that was not up to date. So our first order of business with the project was to get those reports entered. We had the routine and detailed bridge safety inspection report, a fracture critical inspection report, the underwater inspection report, load rating documentation and scour documentation have all been uploaded within the last couple of months. This report I updated last week.
Is MyBridge something the public can view? Or do you need like a state or contractor login for it, do you know?
Well, okay.
I know you're not an expert on MyBridge, but.
Well, you could view it, I think.
Okay.
As long as you ask for permissions to see and get access to it.
I was thinking more or less like a public portal, public facing portal. But maybe that's something we can.
There's not one a way for the public to do that that I am aware of.
But, okay.
But that doesn't mean it's not possible.
To get access to the portal, normally you have to contact the state of Michigan and they have to validate your credentials for being somebody that can have an account with that system. The question of whether that information is public would probably be the, and foible would probably be a different question. But generally, it's specific to an entity or an individual associated with an entity that owns the bridge.
Considering what happened with Wayne County in 10 years, where it was the same report issued over and over, the more that we get online for people to scrutinize, the better, I think.
I actually asked that question of the state. Were the reports that were uploaded in the system available for the general public? And they actually expressed some concern about it being a soft target in some of those reports and what they say. And having those out in the public unredacted for general consumption. So, you know, those are things that we have to look at. And we would want to definitely have further conversations with the state about because they actually expressed that concern when I actually asked that question. So. I didn't mean to derail your presentation, Mark. Please continue, sorry about that.
The first report, well, in fact, this report was updated last week. What happens with the bridge safety inspection report and the fracture critical inspection report, they're due, the longest duration between inspections is two years. This bridge was due to be re-inspected by August 2nd of this year. So what happens is Allison down with MDOT, she runs the entire bridge inspection program for the state of Michigan. If you have a bridge that's going to be due for inspection a month beforehand, the owner, Derek, got an email saying, hey, you haven't assigned an inspector this bridge to have the report updated for you. He got that email, he notified me. And what we did last week, I updated this inspection report from our inspection of June of last year. Okay? So what I've done, in essence, is I've reset that inspection date. It's now due to be re-inspected by May of 2026. Because we inspected in May of 2024. So I just updated this last week. The bridge safety inspection report and the fracture critical inspection report were just updated. And it matched all our field findings from last May. And in our detailed inspection report that we submitted, when was that? Over a year ago.
Yeah.
There was a version of this report that we created for that report, but it wasn't the official MyBridge database copy. The underwater report was not in the system prior. And that inspection was done in June of 2024. That report is now fully uploaded and official on the database. The load rating assumptions, the load rating that we did is part of our detailed inspection and reporting. That documentation was not in the system either. Why? Because you weren't officially the owners back at that time when we completed that. Now that you are, we could upload those official forms. There's two forms, there's the load rating assumptions and a load rating summary form. So what it does is it's a concise summary of our thousands of pages of numbers and calculations. This was one of the bigger ones that was not in the system, which was a level one scour analysis. What this version of a scour analysis is, is primarily a visual. It's what, what is the channel geometry coming under the bridge? How tall are the embankments? How much overbank is there? Is there signs of erosion around the substructures that piers the abutments? So it's basically a visual and you can do it by just walking around. This got this item into compliance, but they want more. With the bridge of this size and this nature, they want a level two scour analysis performed. And we're currently working on that. And you'll see that, I got a little bit on that coming up. But that level two requires channel bottom sediment samples to be put into a hydraulic model. And those samples are going to be taken here in August. I'm going to get into out of the bridge compliance and all the forms and all the fun stuff in MyBridge. Early preliminary engineering, that's what we're really doing right now. Before we're producing structural plans, we have to go through a lot of legwork. This is a historic bridge. So the historic assessment, they were onsite in June. They actually did a walk through, took a lot of photographs. They visited the Grosse Lake Historical Society. And you can see they grabbed a couple of these old photos that were on file. The one with the bridge tower up in the upper left, I may be curious of whether or not they collected the tolls going each way in the middle of the bridge. It was a fun time. I don't know, it's just kind of weird. Look, the cars are stopped and there's a little booth there.
But.
There was a booth there in the middle, if that's what you're saying, sir.
I don't know, I don't know what.
There was, I mean.
There was, okay.
I mean, there was one there. I used to throw.
I thought that was kind of cool to see a photo like that. So by doing this historic assessment, what this leads up to is officially, when you work on a structure that's historic, we have to show and fill out paperwork that's sent to SHIPO, the State Historian Preservation Office. And we need to prove that we are not going to change the view of this structure and be a detriment to its historic nature. So that's what the beginning of that process is. This, since we are not replacing anything that's going to change the visual aspects of this bridge, this should be a rather quick process, but it still has to be done. The historic assessment has begun. We are preparing the SHIPO form. We're developing the area potential effects. Now, what that is, the ape, what I foresee on this bridge is the only thing that we're really going to affect would be if that level two scour analysis comes back and says we have the potential for scour at a foundation, which is the erosion of the channel bottom. We may have to add scour countermeasures, which is big rocks, broken concrete, to prevent the river velocity from washing the sediment out of, around the foundations. That could be our only impact to this project site. We are in the beginning stages. We just signed a agreement with GEI consultants to do the muscle survey. Now, my fingers are crossed, but I was told that in this reach of the Trenton Channel, we do not have endangered muscles known to be in existence in this general area. But they still have to come in, they still have to take a look around, they still have to do the survey and produce a report. The, what we just also are in the final stages of is we're going to have, when GEI is in town in late August to do the muscle survey, they are also, while their commercial dive team is in town and scuba diving around the foundations, they are going to collect the channel bottom sediment samples for us to perform that hydraulic analysis for the scour analysis. That's going to save a substantial amount of money versus taking those samples from a drill rig on a barge that would have to be rented for at least a week. Another part of the early preliminary engineering is the survey. That has the primary, intermediate and scan control surveys completed. What that is, to make it simple, is we can't just use one benchmark. So what Fishbeck has done is they've got, they took a benchmark on the mainland and they took a benchmark on the island. They did a survey leveling loop and things match. That's always a good, good thing that we have benchmarks that meet. A little bit more on that level two scour analysis. The diagram, the picture on the right, just let's pretend that's a concrete column. We've got solid wall piers and abutments. River velocity, sometimes when they get a screen and you get a high water event and you have a runoff, the water flow, the current around us, an object in the river, there's, there's always a chance that the sediment gets stirred up, carried away downstream. You could have the sediment in the channel at the Toll Bridge get washed all the way down to the free bridge. Bay City's had a lot of problems with that. I don't foresee any extreme evidence of that from the underwater report that was done for this structure. But we have to perform this analysis, it has to be on file within MyBridge. As I mentioned before, that hydraulic model, we're going to get the sediment samples. Those are going to be taken by GEI while the commercial divers are in town doing the muscle survey. The utility coordination has begun. Fishbeck's got that going. I mean, we're not going to get the spaghetti jungle you got pictured here, but we got to do it. We got to map them out, we got to know it's underground. We don't want to get anything hit. We got to have things rerouted if necessary. I don't envision there being a whole lot of utility relocation on this project. The early maintenance and traffic concepts are being developed. It's pretty easy when you've got the free bridge closed, like every other week here, it seems. And one detour route, you just flip it around and you got the other bridge covered. So there's a lot of data out there for that. But that has begun, that process is underway. For us, as the structural engineers, we have started to collect and develop and convert existing plans into usable documents for the proposed plans. That's where we're at on plan development. But to start a project like this, a lot of it's the early stuff, the coordinations, the surveys, the analyses that have to be performed. That's where we're at and they're underway, if not completed. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I've got one.
Go ahead, Bill.
We were talking about how high water levels can affect the bottom around the supports.
Correct.
Suburban America emerges, you know, there's more roads, there's more roofs and everything. There's an increase in water that could be coming down past there. Do we face any challenges like that in this circumstance?
I don't see any high potential for scour here. What we've seen on the existing plants, which are kind of thin on detail, the, the river piers were, per plan, from the early 1920s, they went down to hardpan or bedrock. However, with that being said, the underwater report does show some pockets of undermining on some of the corners of those solid wall piers. And there have been grout bags placed. And there have been grout bags placed to fill those holes. So if it was actually dug down to bedrock when they cast those piers, something has eroded. So maybe they didn't get all the way down to super, super solid hardpan rock. That's my guess with that. But I don't envision there being a lot more that could erode in a scour situation.
Okay, Mickey.
Can you guys refresh my memory? When are we, when do we even think that we'll start to do the repairs on the bridge? I know it's a rough estimate because we have to go through all these steps, but.
I think it was scheduled for, I think it's on the, it's on the schedule online, but I want to say it was 2020, summer 2026, late summer 2026.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I remember too.
Where are we in the process right now?
We're in the early preliminary plan development with this upfront work being substantially underway, if not complete.
Okay. And the information that you presented online tonight, is that available for the public review?
Which part?
All of it.
The reporting?
The slideshow.
Sure, if you want to.
Yeah, yeah, we can get a copy from Mark and put it on our website.
Thank you.
All right, Mark?
No, actually I was going to ask something similar to what Kevin just said, so I'm good. Thank you. Good presentation.
Thanks.
I'm good. Thank you.
Just a couple, a couple of quick things to add. Mark talked about compliance. A lot of the reports that were necessary, required by the state and the federal government, we were able to use a lot of the pre-purchase engineering work that we had done to, to provide that information. So we didn't have to recreate a lot of that. It just had to be put into the format that My Bridge, as Mark had mentioned, requires. So when we did our RFP for engineering, that was included in that RFP. The scour wasn't something that we had done as part of the pre-purchase engineering. So that was additional work that we had asked all the consultants to, to bid on and be part of their package, which they did. So that scour was something that had to be done brand new. Meanwhile, the other compliance issues such as the underwater and the, the overall engineering report, they were able to take that information that we already had and just put it into the system. So the state had contacted us and said, hey, look, you know, prior to purchase, this bridge is out of compliance. So we made sure that that was included in our proposals or our RFP to make sure that, that was step number one. So, and then I have calls, I believe on a weekly basis or every other week with H and H and the various consultants where they give me updates on where we are with, you know, the process. And obviously it's a long process. There's a lot to be considered, but you know, they're, they're going through it the correct way and doing your permitting first to make sure that those things that could be time constraints with regards to outside organizations like SHPO or, you know, the environmental reviews, those are taken care of, you know, early on, so those aren't hiccups down the road.
One thing I should have added before, when we talk about compliance, there's a program in the state of Michigan called the Critical Bridge Program. And if you're in compliance, you can get emergency funding. You have to apply for it once a year. If you're not in compliance, you're not going to get that. So it's a key to be in compliance to be able to be considered for federal funding in an emergency situation. And it may be if the bridge was in a really, really poor condition, you can get grant money through that program to help you repair a bridge. So that's the key of being in compliance. If you're not, you're not going to get that funding.
In, in addition, the federal government takes a look at the state's bridge system, all of the bridges that fall in the My Bridge program. And the federal government, if the state isn't in compliance and its bridges aren't in compliance, the federal government will not supply the state of Michigan with funding from a federal level. So it's critical that your bridge doesn't fall into non-compliance, which then could potentially put the state out of compliance, which then could put their federal funds at risk, which they are not going to allow to happen. So.
Federal highway comes after Ellie in downtown Lansing and then she comes after your, the owners.
Well, you know what? We're going to be setting up a bridge commission real soon, so hopefully that'll help. But hey, thank you for teaching us a whole new vocabulary too.
You're welcome.
So that would also apply then to the Wayne County Bridge as well, correct? Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
Mark?
Would you mind staying a few minutes for public comment and if anybody has questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
If you, if you do have questions for Mark and the bridge engineers, you will address them to the board and then the board will defer to Mark. So just so it's a pleasant experience for everyone. Okay, so at this point Derek, or not Derek, Ross, will now present to us the brief master plan overview. So before he gets into that, I want to point out, so this master plan thing has gone on for a couple of years now. Regardless of what you think of how it's turned out, it's been a very democratic process. And I don't think everyone has gotten everything they've wanted out of the master plan. I know I, I have younger kids and a boat, so I want like some really great amenities for kids and boaters, right? But maybe I didn't get that. I don't know. So it's a little bit of a compromise. Ross is just the messenger. So, and let's see what he has to say. And you know, if there's changes we can make that are more many amenable to the community writ large, then those are, obviously need to be considered. So. You asking Ross a question?
No, you.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you. Do, if there are any bridge questions, would you entertain them now possibly and then start this?
Yeah, all right, we can do that.
Just so.
Just so we can get Mark out of here. So is there anybody who has any questions for Mark? Come up to the podium. We'll limit it to one minute.
Yeah, I just have, I just have one question. Tim Anderson, McComb.
Thank you.
Just one question. I, I haven't read the whole bridge packet or whatever, but I assume that the, call it the drive that swings the bridge is being modernized. When I hear if the bridge goes down, there's a part that's got to be handmade, that's going to take weeks. I assume we've taken care of that and we're.
Yeah, there's significant upgrades planned for the turnstile, but if you want to extrapolate on that, Mark.
To answer your question, the entire mechanical system is going to be replaced and with modern equipment, modern motors, probably 95% of the electrical system will be replaced as well with modern limit switches, PLC drives. Whole thing will be upgraded.
Okay. I'm an engineer, so.
Okay.
That's why.
Modern equipment with, with parts that are readily available.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Mark, you, Mark, you also mentioned that it's a historic bridge. Are, do you, are you aware of monies that are available for historic bridges?
Not per se for that. But sometimes you can have a significant cost impact to your project to not differentiate the look of the bridge, which sometimes is a struggle. I don't foresee that being a problem here.
Thank you.
All right. Any other bridge questions?
Hi. Jacqueline Lash. Mark, I would just like to know what environmental agencies or groups have you, are going to be consulted on this project, including like migratory birds, bats, the endangered snapping turtle, things of that nature.
All those kind of impacts will be covered under a joint permit prior to doing work. If they're, like the, the muscle survey is going to be conducted. All covered under the joint permit, which is US Army Corps of Engineers and the Michigan Department of.
Just those two, so you don't get like private, like the Sierra Club or the Waterside Michigan people.
Not typically on a project like this.
Can we ask that they be involved?
I think we could ask that.
Think you could.
I'll send me a list that I think will be relevant.
Right.
Okay.
I'm Greg Carmsen, 21228 East River. Had a question about the time schedule on the, on the toll bridge project. As I heard the presentation, the work was scheduled to start in 2026. And if so, how does that correlate with the county's plan for the maintenance that they're also planning to do on the Parkway Bridge, which I understood was going to start in 2026? So my understanding, you had to sequence these two projects so they didn't overlap because, you know, some work, I can, I believe, my understanding can be done on the toll bridge without closing it. But to the extent that there might be a need to close it, how is that being correlated with, with Wayne County?
I'm going to defer to Derek on this one because he talks to those guys like every day. So. Yeah, so you are correct. They do have to be coordinated with one another. There are so many projects that we're talking about. I'm going to give you a little bit longer on explanation than I would probably like, but just to make it, I'll try to make it as simple as I can. So in conversation, conversations with H and H, it's, it's my understanding that the toll bridge construction work will not allow that bridge to be open while the construction is taking place. Maybe there might be some on the front end, maybe some on the back end, but for the most part, it will be closed for, for the duration of the project. There are two projects that are scheduled for the Free Bridge. The first one is going to be electrical upgrades with pier patching and barrier island repair. And our understanding is that work originated, it'll be funded from the $20 million that was received by the county a couple of years ago. It feels like a couple of years ago. I'm not sure exactly if it was, but. And that work there doesn't, from our understanding and from what we've been told by the county, is not going to necessitate the bridge to be closed for that work to take place. The much larger superstructure work that is necessary on the Free Bridge, which does require a closure, would happen after the toll bridge work was completed and that bridge was reopened, which would probably be in 2028 or beyond. My understanding is that the county doesn't, has not secured funding for that aspect of work. And they are soliciting bids right now for basically a study to be done for a replacement bridge. So until that report comes back and they understand exactly what the future of that bridge looks like, I'm not even sure exactly what's going to happen with that superstructure project. So I, once again, I apologize for the long explanation, but there are multiple projects going on and they are being coordinated. And as a matter of fact, the work, the second round of work that was done to the Free Bridge, the second time it closed, there was an inspection after the first round of work, which turned out a couple, turned up a couple additional items. The county proactively went ahead and addressed those to try to keep from having to close the bridge at, at any point over the next, you know, 18 to 24 months while we're doing our work. So that work probably didn't necessarily need to be done right away. But their goal is to try to keep that bridge open all the way up until when our bridge is completed and the construction is done. Now, Mark, I don't know if you want to add anything to that. I know you have some involvement or your organization has some involvement with some Wayne County work, but.
I could just confirm what you said.
Okay.
I'm also, back next week, I'm turning in final plans for that major special work on the swing span of the Free Bridge. You are correct and they do not have funding for that. And that is in our coordination working with the township. I'm going to, we can't take them both down. It can't happen. We know that.
I'm tracking. I'll summarize.
I agree with you Derek, that the toll bridge will be under construction first and finished before they ever do the major work on the swing span.
And if you, if you recall, one of the benefits, I think we, we realized when we brought forth H and H as the, as the engineer for the toll bridge was they do have involvement with the county and various projects on the Parkway Bridge. So that line of communication, that coordination is, is very natural there because of their involvement in both projects.
Thank you.
And to summarize what Mark said off mic, because I know the people at home wouldn't have heard it, was he confirmed what Derek said. He is working on both projects and they've, both Wayne County, Groseal and H and H have stated and understand that both bridges cannot be under repair at the same time. So the coordination is multi-agency. So. All right, anyone else on bridge questions before we move on to master plan? Okay, Ross, you're up again.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for providing me with this opportunity to present the Township Master Plan update. It's been a two-year-long process. Lot of work, especially since November, since we released the draft in, in November 24. So I'll kind of give an overview of what a master plan is. Where we were in 2002 when we adopted the previous master plan, where we are today, and then how to use the plan moving forward. So a master plan is a guidebook for Groseal's decision makers based on the community's vision of the future. It includes actual steps and helps officials decide how to direct township funding, what initiatives to take on, and it lists tangible goals. This document benefits residents by informing elected officials and township staff on how to enhance the quality of life for residents, improve the economic vitality of our businesses, and how to improve our island's environment. This plan was funded by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And then future zoning ordinance updates and plans will be funded by Michigan State Housing Development Authority. So why are we updating now? The Michigan Planning Enabling Act provides us with the legal basis to update the plan. At least every five years, the Planning Commission must review the existing plan to determine whether to amend or adopt a new one. The last plan was adopted in 2002, which exceeds the typical life, life, lifespan of 20 years. And in June of 2023, the Planning Commission and township staff determined that a new plan must be adopted in order to sufficiently plan for the next two decades. So where we were in 2002, development, large tracts of housing development was occurring in the 1990s. This was often seen by clear-cutting woodlands for housing, and these often resulted in 16,000 square foot lots developed in the form of subdivisions. There we go. And the township was becoming overbuilt by these developments. So the response back then was to adopt the open space program where we purchased woodlands to preserve in perpetuity. This successfully stopped unfettered development and provided wonderful recreational opportunities for islanders. The township also adopted the R1E overlay, which required any new land being subdivided, condominiums or conventional subdivision projects to be exceedingly large with a minimum 30,000 square foot lot size. This increased land development costs and stopped large-scale development and stabilized the population today. So where are we today? Groseal is aging. The median age for the township increased from 43 to, in 2000 to 52 in 2020. We're the top 15 in southeast Michigan for that, for that age range. And as you can see in the, in these bar graphs here, the most population, population lost by age was from 5 to 24, 45 to 54, and then most population growth by age from 65 to 79. Student enrollment is declining as well. Student enrollment is projected to decrease over time with population. This not only impacts our students, but also our staffing needs, facilities with Meridian Elementary closure and more. In 2002, we had 2,045 students in the school system, whereas in 2024, we have just over a little 1,500. And then projected in 2045, have 1389. And these are figures from, from the school district. And then housing needs are changing as well. When most homes were built on the island, the average family size was 4.5, whereas in 2020, it's almost half that, 2.5 per household. And when you look at these, so we have 455 or 4,000, 4,555 units on, on the island. Comparable household size to the rest of Wayne County and a little bit higher than Gibraltar and Wyandotte. Only 8% of islanders rent here in our housing age. This is where you see in 1990 to 1999, we had 967 homes built. And then the 2002 plan, open space program and new zoning policies were enacted. And then you kind of see the impacts of that following. So this is the master plan, as was brought up earlier. This plan has been open to the public since June 23rd of 2025. And just a little bit of an overview of who's been involved. The consultant was Smith Group and CIB Planning. The project manager was Community Development Department with oversight by the Planning Commission, the Township Board, the steering committee of nine members representing seven organizations, and input from six commissions and committees. and committees, nine stakeholder groups, and over 2,000 residents. I just want to take this time to kind of let everyone know who the Planning Commission is. So John Schweickert, he's the Planning Commission Chair and has been a member since 1991. Is also a ZBA member. Jay Frucci is a Planning Commission member since 2001 and a former DDA member. Brian Pollak, he's a Planning Commission member since 2011 and also the BPAC Chair, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee Chair. Eric Ranka, he's been a member since 2002 and a former treasurer. Angela Sukakis has been a member since 2020. Is also a school board member and a former DDA director. John Rathell has been a member since 2019. He's a former trustee and current Airport Commerce Park member. And then Kurt Kholbliak, he's been a member since 2024, was a former supervisor, treasurer, trustee, and fire commission chair. So, you know, the members of the Planning Commission are, you know, the leaders in the community, they're volunteers, and they have a lot of institutional knowledge when it comes to, you know, when it comes to this community. So. Just lightly go over the process. In July of 2023, the Planning Commission Chair, Township Manager, former trustee De Beauzo, and Community Development Director interviewed two firms and selected Smith Group. From fall to winter of '23, we had a team meeting kickoff, our first steering committee meeting, mobile tours, Township Board, and Planning Commission joint workshop. We put out our first survey, and then we started promoting the plan, getting people involved, letting them know, hey, we're having surveys, here's how you can put your input. And then in spring through the fall of '24, we had three steering committee meetings, two additional surveys, two Planning Commission workshops, and eight workshops within the community, which included both virtual and in-person workshops. And then from winter '24 to summer '25, in November, like I mentioned, on November 8th, the master plan draft was distributed and posted online. December 2nd, the Planning Commission noted that there were several sections that needed to be rewritten for accuracy, primarily within the housing and land use sections, as well as the action items. And the Planning Commission directed staff, me, to rewrite these sections. And after reviewing my edits, the Planning Commission attempted to edit the action items during their meeting in January. Then the Planning Commission voted to require all Planning Commission members to send comments and edits to the Executive Committee, which is comprised of Eric Ranka, John Schweickert, and Jay Frucci. So all the Planning Commission members provided their input to the Executive Committee. The Executive Committee reviewed that and then made edits to the draft. On February 19th, the Planning Commission voted on each deletion and modification to the action items. There are 11 action items that were deleted and 13 that were modified. All edits to this section are reflected in the revision list appendix of the plan. I think that's 5.3, the appendancy 5.3. The Planning Commission then directed the Executive Committee to make edits to the housing and land use sections to match the action items. So, kind of dive into this layer, but there are action items to carry out recommendations in the plan. So when they edited the action items, they had to change the body of the plan.
That's not what Smith Group calls them though, right? They're not action items, they're implementation?
Yeah, it's the implementation list, but then there's, then it says within each action item. So it's kind of interchangeable.
Okay.
And then May 19th, the Executive Committee presented on their proposed edits to the housing and land use sections of the plan, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously on each section. The Township Staff, the next township, on June 23rd, the Township Staff published the latest version of the plan on the Township's website. Then on June 30th, the Planning Commission voted to adopt the master plan and recommend adoption to the Township Board. So throughout this whole process, we've heard from, we've collected 2,514 total online and in-person survey responses, a little under 300 virtual comments. We did 500 mailings, 300 handouts, 20 posters, eight social media posts, and four red alerts, four virtual roundtables, six in-person workshops, four in-person meetings with Planning Commission and one with Township Board, and one plan for approval, which includes a lot of data, a lot of information about the township, where we are today, and a lot of trends that we see moving into the next 20 years. So the foundation of the plan is guided by a shared vision and values that informs the goals, objectives, and actions the township will take in the future. The vision is what defines Groseal, defines what Groseal can become in the future and is aspirational. The values are shared beliefs that the community holds that guide why Groseal will take certain actions, and that the goals and objectives are the necessary steps Groseal will take to achieve the vision and values. And when we were at the beginning stages of creating this plan and doing a lot of public engagement, you know, we said, we got to have like a vision statement. So altogether, when collecting survey responses, this is sort of the vision statement. So Groseal Township is a sustainable and tranquil community where residents of all ages thrive while preserving the island's unique character, exceptional recreation opportunities, and natural beauty. And these are focused around these four big ideas, which are resilience and adaption, recreation and adventure, community and collaborative spirit, and then finally, health and safety. So this is included in the plan to educate community members on how to use it and how the township decision makers will use it. So as a guide for us working here at the township and for you all, elected officials and various commissions and committees, the plan provides overarching steps to help the township achieve this vision that was created. And the following five goals are listed in the plan. And this is housing, connectivity, mobility, economic growth and prosperity, open space and waterfronts, and then finally, quality of life. Then under each goal, there are several pieces of key information that include a goal statement, the existing conditions, data trends, and community input for each goal, the objectives of those goals, and then toolkits with case studies and best practices in how to implement those goals. So this is the action plan that I touched on briefly. I just took this as a screenshot from the plan itself. So goals outlined in the plan are ambitious, that will require collaboration of many individuals and groups across the island and the region. The action plan outlines the timeframe, responsible parties, and potential partners that will help make these goals a reality. So for instance, you know, objective H3 says to promote and streamline desired residential development missing or unprovided in the market. And number three is hold a developer roundtable to share out township goals and solicit feedback from developers on challenges and opportunities for new construction on the island. So in that timeframe, we put as near because we feel like that we could potentially do some development, whether it's on Macomb Street or at Commerce Park here. And then it says the partners that would contribute would be the Community Development Department, the DDA, and Commerce Park Commission. So just diving into each of the five goals quickly here. Housing, to maintain housing choices, to make Groseal Township a desirable place to live for current and future residents, promote and streamline desired residential development that is missing or unprovided in the market. And this is through accessory dwelling units, conservation development, which is cluster-style housing, and prioritize sustainability and resiliency with new housing. Ensure that new development does not negatively impact neighbors and the environment. Connectivity and mobility, maintain and enhance a connectivity system that offers safe and efficient mobility for all users and abilities. And this would include BPAC, relevant commissions and departments, enhancing and growing our existing trails and pathways, and improving access to open space. Then economic growth and prosperity, support a prosperous local economy through development, placemaking, and small business supports. And this looks in to our policies that may be preventing businesses from opening on Macomb Street, encourage a mixture of businesses on Macomb to meet the needs of residents, improve the physical environment of Macomb so it feels like a downtown, and then attract appropriate businesses to Commerce Park without hindering development on Macomb. And this would update our zoning ordinances to encourage a more dense, walkable downtown district. Open space and waterfronts, and this is to steward the land and waters of Groseal while providing opportunities for community members to connect with the natural environment. And this includes improved relationships with Open Space Committee and Groseal Nature and Land Conservancy. And some of the action items are to promote our open spaces more widely across various platforms, protect our open spaces by providing resources to residents, protect open views of shorelines, and enhance waterfront access. Finally, quality of life. This is to continue to provide a high quality of life for current and future residents through quality township services, transparent governance, and a shared community identity. This includes promoting the arts to create a sense of place in the community while preserving historically significant sites, maintain a safe community for residents, business owners, and the general public to thrive, and continue efficient communication to residents through various channels. So what happens after adoption? It sounds like we're going to be postponing that action item to a future meeting, but I think it's important to highlight this. So we'll be implementing action items included in the plan. I think there's about 30 pages. And we have them in, you know, short-term, midterm, and long-term goals that are listed. And then, like I'd mentioned, various departments, commissions, committees, and stakeholders will work together to accomplish these plans. And then zoning updates, once adopted, grant funding through MISHDA will be utilized to update zoning on Macomb Street and our DDA TIF plan to extend the life of the DDA. And then Planning Commission and Township Staff will immediately begin addressing ADU and R1E zoning amendments. And then future zoning updates will be performed depending on community needs and budget. And then annually, we'll review the master plan. Typically, you'd like to see this with a joint meeting between the Township Board and the Planning Commission coming together to talk about, hey, how are we doing on these action items? Is there anything that we need to amend, change? And if so, let's begin that process. So.
Okay, at this time, we'll do questions from the Township Board. Any questions? Margaret?
Sure, I'll start it out. First off, Ross, this is a huge undertaking, and I know you've put a ton of work into it. And I mean this sincerely, I really appreciate it. And to all the Planning Commission members, the same goes for them. I don't think people fully realize that those are volunteers, and they come and they give their time, and it is truly appreciated. And I've watched and attended their meetings, just even prior to this master plan, but they put a lot of effort into this. And I've watched all of these master plan discussions and meetings. And I guess it's why I say I did go through the plan. I am prepared to vote, but I do understand that there's a lot of things that, you know, people can have questions on. So that's why I'm not adverse to pushing out voting on this. But, you know, overall, I think you guys have done a phenomenal job. I think, in my opinion, I think people need to understand, I think we need to be really clear, this is a guide. This is not, things are not set in stone. This is to help guide people through. If there are things, when this is implemented, that have to be changed or we want to do differently, that's something that the board is able to do, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Hundred percent.
So I just, I want to make sure and try to alleviate any, you know, big concerns and help people understand that, you know, again, this is a guide, and it's a really good guide. And it's kind of like, you know, you're not going to, you heard these, if you listen to the planning meeting, you'll hear at least two or three of these members say the same thing. You're not always going to get exactly what you want in a plan like this. It's just, it's not feasible. But they came as close as they could to satisfy as much as they could. And we're just going to have to, you know, move along, support the teams that are going to start to enact these things. And then if there are gaps, we can fill those gaps. This isn't going to, this plan would not stop us from filling any gaps. And I just want to make sure we're all understanding that that's the case.
Yep. Okay. Nikki?
Hey, Ross, I also want to thank you because that stuff you gave me, it took me a solid day just to read, to work on it. So truly appreciate all that you've done. I do want to say, so this is a guideline, and then from what I understand, there will be ordinance changes, and those would come back to the board, right?
Correct.
To understand the process. And all of this doesn't mean anything without a friendly neighbor program, like somebody suggested to me, but ordinance enforcement. And so.
Microphone.
So anybody watching didn't hear any of that, and it's okay. But I'm also concerned not only with the zoning that will come from it, but the ordinance enforcement, because I've seen so much where encroachment on open space, you won't believe what we found recently, short-term rentals, different things like that. So none of this means anything unless people actually abide by it. And there's also the rule that it doesn't matter if you know about it, you have to ask about it, right? So if you don't know there's a particular rule, you can't say I didn't know. You have to read the ordinance, you have to read these documents before you take some drastic action on your property. So I appreciate all of this, and I think it's going to be different steps. And I think when we get to the end, it'll really be worthwhile for the time that you spend on it. So thank you.
I just did want to clarify, this plan doesn't impact our ordinance enforcement whatsoever. This is all strictly land use.
These will be different things, right? You're setting the guidelines, it was in here quite a bit, how much people value open space, for example. And then we'll make some ordinance changes, and then those will get published and people will be put on notice, right? And then to make all this work, people have to respect those, right? Respect their neighbors, follow the ordinance requirements as well.
Right.
So I think there's more to come after this process.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, well, again, to echo what has been said already, I know you guys put a lot of time and work into this. And I'm not trying to discount that in any way by adding this as a discussion item as opposed to an action item tonight. If I understand correctly, this is going to work hand, I understand it's a guide, but it's going to work hand in hand with the zoning. So we make any major changes to the zoning, that means we have to go back and change the plan. So there's, no?
No, no, the master plan provides the basis for us to update our zoning ordinances.
So to your point though, Mark, if we were to change some ordinance in a significant way that isn't in the master plan, and the residents get an uproar about it, we don't necessarily have a lot of, we don't have a leg to stand on in court when we're like, yeah, we turned the marina into a second golf course when you said you wanted a bigger marina, right? So that's just kind of an extreme example.
Right. But actually, and you know, the marina is zoned recreation, so you actually could do that. But yeah, it would be like building a hospital in a residential area.
Right.
Like that's.
I understand James' point, but I guess the point I was going to is, is after talking with the township planner as well, that they kind of have to coincide. So there is a connection between the zoning and the master plan. If we make any major changes on either one, they both have to reflect each other.
Right. I mean, so there's recommendations in this master plan, right?
Yes.
Like let's just say, you know, accessory dwelling units. Once we update, we can take as long as we'd like. We don't have to update our zoning ordinances to include ADUs. If we go through the public hearing process and everyone says, we don't want this, we can say, we went through this process, nobody wanted it, even though our master plan says to look into it. This is just strictly saying, consider all these options. Because through, you know, all this data trend, all these data trends, community input, you know, best practices, these are the recommendations that we are providing for you. But if, you know, if for whatever reason you don't want to do anything in the plan, you're not legally, it's not legally binding in that regard.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was kind of going from zoning to the plan, not from the plan, not to the plan to the zoning. These are options, these are ideas for us to do. But I know there's a connection between the two. If we change a bunch of zoning to match, that's, going back to what I originally said, and the reason why one of this is a discussion item, was to review some of that stuff before we set this. I know it's going to be set in stone. I know we can change the plan if we have to change the plan, but that's going to be a long, arduous process as well. We can't just make a stroke of the pen up here and change it during one of our meetings. That part I understand.
Right.
So there's several steps to it.
But yeah.
So I just want to try to make sure that everybody has sufficient time, including the residents of this island to go through too. And if they have any questions within the next few weeks or next month, whatever we decide on time frame wise.
Right. No, and that's a.
Forward.
That's a good point, Mark, because I think the thing, the master plan will endure longer than any member of this board sitting up here, right? So like the things it sets into motion are important because they're the guideposts for future elected officials and administrators, right? So it is, it is very important.
That's an important point to make there because we're going to be getting our act together, so to speak. We're going to be making effort to go forward, summon learning We're going to be making effort to go forward, summon, learning from that effort, and modifying and changing. We have the flexibility to do it. We have to cooperate, all of our agencies together, one with the other, to share information. So long-term plan, I think there's, I've sensed an enthusiasm to do that.
So this is the guiding principles, and then the ordinance is our local law, right? So that's what you have to abide by, are the local ordinances, but your local ordinances should reflect the guiding principles.
Correct.
Right? And then you need enforcement, because unfortunately, they're not always followed, right? The ordinances aren't always followed.
Well, regarding to like zoning ordinance, they are followed.
Zoning are, but like encroachment with open space and that, there's some other ordinances.
Yeah, but, and that's totally different than what the master plan is dealing with. It's, I mean, I mean, of course, like, we're talking about connectivity, mobility, the economics of the island, but really, where it gets into legal stuff is the land use section of the plan, which infers the zoning ordinance changes. So we're talking about, that's what the master plan is guiding.
It's a guideline for, when you go to make those changes in the future, you go back to that plan and say, if these changes are proposed, is it consistent with what the master plan says we want to do in this community or in these areas or associated with building or something along those lines? Is it consistent with is always the question.
You also mentioned that you've looked at these like every five years, and so if we start this out and we work on it for a while and we figure out that something needs to change, then we would just go back and look at amending the master plan, right?
You can, you can change it.
Minor amendments.
We could, we could adopt it, you know, two weeks from now, and then you could say, let's open it up and change it again in a week.
But I'm thinking more minor amendments, right?
Right, yeah. But, I mean, you can, it's intentionally, it's supposed to be a living, breathing document, because, you know, a lot can change in five years. I mean, a lot has changed in twenty years, so, or on a yearly basis. So that's why it's, it's good practice to review it every year with the Planning Commission and yourselves to discuss, hey, what do we, you know, have things changed the past year? If so, maybe let's open this up and make some changes to it, so.
That's a great point.
Let's invite in this.
To point out.
Yeah.
Okay. You got anything, John?
Ross, one of the, would you describe the, how the master plan can be modified for the zoning or ordinance changes? And what's the timeline for, so in other words, going forward, how long does it take to modify the master plan? And then, once the master plan's approved, how long does it usually take to make changes to ordinances? And what would be the timeline?
Yeah, so a minor amendment would require a forty-five day public, public review period of the amended changes, of the changes that you're proposing. A major amendment would be, I think it was sixty-four days, and that, we extended that well off. But, and then it would just be a matter of going through Planning Commission, drafting changes to the zoning ordinance based off of that plan, after that forty-five days. And that, so I'd say anywhere from three to six months.
To change the plan?
To change the plan and then up, and have a zoning update.
And so, once the plan is approved, how quickly will you start zoning changes?
Oh, we would begin pretty, pretty soon. The intent is to find a consultant to do Macomb Street zoning update. Sometimes when we're doing the size that we're anticipating, that might take, I mean, I thought that this plan would take a year, and here we are a year too. So, you know, I could, anywhere from Macomb Street, it would probably take six months to a year, depending on when we can get Planning Commission to meet, and then when we get the recommendations to you guys, for you guys to approve them. So it's really a matter of having everyone, you know, on the same page with all the changes as they come.
I'd like to stress on that point, that it's very vital when we're starting out and learning about this document and making things happen, that we try our best to have a long-term point of view to know that what this item we're doing will have as an impact on the future. My main concern in this is our tax base. We're, we have, the only real thing by law we have as a township is property to tax, and we don't have a long yardage of that. So we need to know how all the parts and pieces fit in and what we need to do. Some of them will be more difficult to discover than others, but we try to ask as many questions as we can and coordinate them. I mean, in a simple example, we have a list of things, one of the concerns we have is housing. Well, that automatically converts to roads and water and wastewater, and you got to have it all go together. You don't talk about it, you wouldn't be when you're putting it together. And it all has an impact. So we have a good time to make things happen, but we need to be careful as we look at them as well.
So we do have this as a discussion item listed at the end of the meeting. I'd like to get into public comment if nobody has questions for Ross. Everybody good? Okay. Thank you, Ross. All right, where are we? Okay, we'll do public comment, limited to three minutes. This isn't a hearing, it's comment, so we'll answer how we can if it's appropriate for us to do so. So who would like to go? Okay?
Okay, Jack Lash, one-six-seven-five Newton. First, I'd just like to say with the master plan, I appreciate all the work you've done. I went in, I got the whole thing, so I'm very familiar with it, but unfortunately, a lot of changes have been made just in a short period of time. So that's my only concern, is that this thing's been ongoing for two years, but you got all this input from two thousand residents, but then it goes to the Planning, you know, Commission, and then in this last couple months, a whole lot of things are gone that people wanted. So I just think that maybe you guys should like step back a little bit, really look at like what it was, you know, from the beginning to what it is now, and really make sure you understand what has changed, what has been taken out, what has been been put in. Because that's really, like you said, you don't want to be up here every week for variances and nonconformity, you know what I'm saying? That's just going to pile you in a bunch of hearings and, you know, legal stuff. I mean, that would be my only concern, because I did see some things that I was excited about, and now they're gone. You know, a lot of the, like, smaller housing, you guys said that, you know, we don't have that population of young people, they can't afford a big, single residence home, you know, on a big lot. You know, we should look at like having those smaller lots, maybe having some modular homes, you know what I'm saying, and having more, you know, to attract young families instead of, you know, big lots and everything. So that would just be my, and I'm, open space, of course, like, we use it all the time, me and my kids are out there metal detecting, and so it's very important. I think the marina expansion would be awesome for us, because it was hard for us to get a dock last year. We have one secured now, but we had to be on like a really crappy spot, because, you know, a lot of people want to, you know, dock there. And it's awesome, you guys, you know, you let us keep them there when we get them wrapped, and I think that's, and you make money off it. I mean, it's a, you know, it's a way to generate money, because like you said, a lot of the bulk of everything is taxed, you know, from property. So anything that, you know, you can have that is like a more of a business on the township end is good, you know, good for us all. We don't need another golf course. Also, I would just like to say that I'm presenting to you guys tonight a community benefit agreement, and I started a resident advocacy group called the Island Arc, and this is something for you guys to look over and consider. It is in regards to tolls when the free bridge is down. So this is, this kind of explains our position and how we feel about it. And just for like the longevity of this board, you know, we'd like to keep you all in place, but.
Ten seconds.
You know, we are the voters. So we really think that that's important, and it should be for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lash.
Jameson, I'd like to comment, this is not normal for me, but about her concerns about the toll bridge and the money.
Okay.
Darren Camilleri, our state senator, has arranged a bill to pass that would allow people who are traveling across the bridge with proper documentation to have tax credits on their income tax. So it means that, you know, one family has two thousand dollars, and another one has fifteen hundred or whatever, they can just pull that right off their tax bill, and that's a significant.
That was far more for us.
That, that.
Forty days we spent on nine dollars.
Well, the point is that it will help you significantly this coming year, should your tolls be that great, to get some relief. So it's important for you to know that you have, you have a good idea here, but there's something in place that's doing something of substance now.
So we have actually a draft resolution, resolution of support for that Senate bill that will hit at the end of the action items today, too, Bill. So, good introduction. Okay, any other public comment?
It's hard to summarize my concerns of the master plan in three minutes.
You still have to state your name and address, Kyle.
But I've written some things down to try.
Even though we know you, you have to state your name and address.
I know. For the record, my name's Kyle DeBose, two-one-seven-one-nine West River Road. I'm also a former Township trustee and the former Planning Commission liaison to the board. Over twenty years, I've said some of this before, but I want to say it again, over twenty years ago with the master plan, many of the folks still serving on the Planning Commission made some good choices, especially around protecting open space. But some of the housing restrictions put in place back then and still being defended now are creating real problems. They've made it harder and more expensive to maintain existing homes and businesses, and harder to build new ones, even when they fit the character of township neighborhoods. That's why you're having to take action on something like Airport Inn tonight. I'm glad you are, but I hope it also makes clear, you can make one-off zoning fixes for hundreds of properties across the township that need it. We've seen the consequences of our existing master plan over the last two decades, declining of school enrollment and aging population, and the shrinking capacity to sustain township services. It's getting harder for young families to move here, and harder for older folks to age in place. Ordinance enforcement was mentioned. Because so much of our underlying housing is nonconforming, people look at their neighbors' houses and say, they're able to have that, why can't I? And they decide to build it on their own. That's something I've seen as a consequence of the last master plan, without going for permits, without getting the things to do. So anyway, that's why the Township Board launched a public update of the master plan. It was a long process, over two thousand people participated. The draft published in late twenty-twenty-four wasn't perfect, but it reflected that input and honored the time and care that went into it from the public. Since then, large portions of the plan have been rewritten by a subset of the Planning Commission without the same transparency or public engagement that we made sure to include in twenty-twenty-four. Even as someone who follows us closely, I only received the full list of nearly two thousand, two hundred changes last week, and I'm still digesting them. As far as I know, that, yes, I'm still digesting them. I'm glad you all voted to delay action tonight. As you look through the plan, all I ask is that you notice, many of the changes removed are not just policies, but even consideration of important ideas, especially around housing and public input. That erases the voices of those of us who spent a lot of time and energy participating in this process. I know it's hard to delay action tonight, and it'll be even harder to send it back, but from my experience on the board, this is likely your only shot at this during your term, possibly for many board terms in the future. Please, for all of us you represent, do your best to get this right. Thank you.
You had a whole minute left, Kyle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Raymond Geist, Elmar Drive. At your last meeting, the board rejected a three-year extension of the Campo Brothers contract with the township. This was spearheaded by Treasurer Flavin, citing best practices and fiduciary responsibilities. Treasurer Flavin, you claimed you were elected to worry about the fiscal purposes. Yes, you have a fiscal responsibility to township, but so do the other members of the board, so do the employees of the township, so do the members who serve on the commissions and committees which support this board. And the residents of Groseal have a fiscal responsibility to ensure our tax dollars are spent wisely. Treasurer Flavin, you throw around the phrase "best practices" as if it were some magical term we should be impressed with, but you only use a portion of best practice which suits your argument. Best practices involve research, analysis, and evaluation. Let's review what we know. Campo Brothers was first awarded a contract in twenty thirteen. When that contract expired at the, in December twenty fourteen, it continued on month-to-month basis with no increase in rates. When the township went out for bids in twenty twenty, Campo Brothers was the only company who responded. And their bid was less than what they had been charging previously. They have not raised rates during the term of this current contract. Since twenty thirteen, the inflation rate, conservatively speaking, has increased thirty-eight percent. I know Charlie Campo personally, but I do not know anything about his business. He's either the most efficient businessman, or maybe he has merely given a little back to his community. I realize that municipal governments operate differently than privately or publicly owned companies, but if I were working and received a proposal thirty-eight percent below market value from a company which I've had good working relationship for at least twelve years, and they are guaranteeing me no increases for the next three years, recommending that to my superiors would not only be fiscal responsibility, it'd also be considered best practice. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any topic?
Good evening, my name's Tim O'Connor, I'm Island Boulevard. I want to thank you for delaying the vote on this thing, because I confess I don't know a whole lot about what, you know, about the master plan, but how big is it?
It's pretty big. Three hundred pages?
Four hundred and forty.
Four hundred and forty pages.
Okay, the reason I ask that is because several of you, you know, admitted that you have not gotten through it. So I guess I have a concern that if members of the board have not gotten through it, how did it make it to the agenda?
Who said, now I said, I read a big stack. I didn't hear.
Bill hasn't gotten through it, I think, I don't know if Mr. Mills did, or it just got the impression that not everybody has got, the only one that said, you know, got through it absolutely is Margaret.
No, I did too.
Okay, well, that's my bad then. But I guess I'm leery if not every board has gotten all the way through it, and so how does something make, I'm not looking for an answer, I'm just making a comment. It shouldn't have made it to the agenda if there's still outstanding, if members of the board haven't seen it. I agree with the comment that was made earlier, members of the Planning Commission probably should be here when it's discussed again. And it wouldn't be a bad idea, I think, if in respect to the comment made earlier, that, you know, a couple hundred changes have been made fairly recently, it might not be a bad idea to go through them and find out, because if you've got two thousand people who have come in and added, you know, made comments, they're going to be looking for something. And if there's something isn't there, it'd probably be a good idea for an explanation on why. Just tossing it out there, you know, like you mentioned that you like boats and, you know, you got kids and, well, if your, if your boating thing isn't there, you're going to like, well, what happened to that? You know, that's, they came and got my comment, why isn't it there? So I think that's a reasonable request to make. Lastly, there's a term that I don't understand, what is an accessory dwelling unit?
So like in-laws' quarters. So as an example, if you've got a single-family home on a half-acre lot, and you want to put a one-bedroom, one-bathroom suite out in, out in the backwoods for your father-in-law or something, you would be able to, you could not do that now.
So the accessory building unit, is it attached or is it separate?
It's unattached.
It's unattached?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's all I got, thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir.
What questions? I said thoughtful questions. Good questions.
Hi, board, my name's Alex Track, Sherwood Drive. I'm, just give you a quick synopsis of my perspective. I'm a fairly new resident to the island. I moved here in twenty twenty-two, was a resident of Woodhaven for nearly a decade. My wife grew up in the area, I was unfortunately born in Ohio, now a Michigander. Nevertheless, I just, I participated in virtual meetings. I'm a father of three, soon to be four, very busy. My wife's looking at me right now going, I'm trying to put three kids to bed, what are you doing? I just wanted to give my perspective here. I participated in those virtual meetings and gave input, and I see two stretches of the paradigm that aren't being addressed in this plan. And I haven't gotten through all of it, but I've read a lot, a lot of, long nights being up with young kids. But the, the younger part of our population and the elderly part of our population, we have parents and grandparents, GGS, that would love to stay here on the island and be able to see their kids and grandkids grow up and not have to leave, be forced to leave the island that they've lived on all their lives. And I just, I don't see actions or items. I'm also a member of Sacred Heart, and I know Father has spoken to us quite often about the ability to be able to provide elder care or some form of assisted living. I know that they were part of one of these other meetings, I'm a frequent watcher but can't participate here, so I try to do as much. participate here, so I try to do as much virtually as I can. And our elder community doesn't want to leave, and I don't want them to either. And I also have broad swath of my younger generation that aren't as fortunate as me to be able to buy one of those big houses built in 96, in the mid-90s, and I want younger population to come here. I want this island to thrive, and I also don't want to see the older generation be forced out. So I just really hope we take a look at this plan, evaluate the elements, and try to address both sides of that, so we can make this island great for the next 20 years. I don't want to move. I've planted my roots here. My kids are going to go through schools. I am so excited to see what's happening with Park Lane in addressing the younger population, my children. I just hope that we really take a look at this and, you know, try to hit it out of the park, because I think we can. I think we just really need to look at these and make sure they're addressing it for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we just say "gold blue"?
All right. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Elizabeth Hugel, 29797 East River Road. I want to also appreciate the delay on the vote. I think, I know there's a great impetus to get it done. I sense that, but I think it should be done right, and since we've been alerted that there have been a number of changes, from my perspective, I just became aware of the release of it today. When I looked on the township website, the date was July 7 that it was posted, so I have not gone through it at all, but I did go through the letter submitted by Kyle DeBose, and I agree with all of his points. You know, the planned unit development, the ADU pattern book, and so on. I won't go through all those details. I did have a couple of questions. Well, and one other note I want to make is that during the presentation, it was given the appearance that the open space program was started as a result of the 2002 master plan, but actually, the open space program was instituted in 1990. I believe that was the year of the first millage, or thereabouts. So I don't know if that historical info is in the master plan, but certainly that should be corrected if it's there. I also wanted to ask, so my main question is, what about the recreation master plan? I remember working and contributing to that back in 2010, 2011, and it's not clear to me how that is incorporated in the master plan, or was that dropped, or is that going to be considered at some point separate from the master plan?
So, I will answer your question. So the master plan that we're talking about now is the master plan.
Right.
Recreation could update its recreation master plan adjacent to that. There is some recreation sections in the current plan, but it's not all-encompassing for recreation, that's for sure.
Okay, so the plan adopted in 2011, or I don't know if there have been updates since then, or when it will be reviewed and updated. I don't know if there are stipulations like the 20-year recommendation or not.
I don't think it's legally mandated. Like, the master plan is legally mandated by the state, but I'm the recreation liaison, so I'll talk to the recreation commission about it. Maybe it's time for an update. It's been 15 years.
Okay, because, yeah, I mean, that is very important to the residents, because, and nonprofit organizations in the community, because they need to point to the master, well, to the master plan or the recreation master plan for saying, yes, this is what the community envisions for, for the township.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Roberta Urbani, 29815 East River Road. I really don't have much to add, because I agree with Liz and Kyle, and I'm concerned about changes that were implemented or things that were removed from the master plan that were community additions. Just a slight thing, so Liz mentioned open space. I would like to remind folks that there's also the Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge that has a unit on Groseal. You know, we are very blessed with an incredible amount of natural areas here, and I'd like to have that be mentioned, you know, that the partnerships with the Conservancy, State Land, you know, that the DNR owns Celron Island, and so we just have all these advantages that we should be very careful of maintaining. And also, I do appreciate the delay in the vote, and Margaret, I do understand, you know, when things, when people show up and say, "Oh, I didn't even know this was happening," it can be frustrating when you've been part of the program for a long time. But thanks for delaying that so that people can become more aware. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that a wrap? Going once, going twice, public comment closed. Oh, actually, it's not. Brian?
Mr. Clerk? I will say I have 11, and just a quick summary before I get to them. They all are regarding delaying the vote tonight, which obviously happened. So would you like me to do them now or at the end of the meeting?
For the sake of the folks sitting in the audience, and I know there's some potential bridge commission members here, let's read them at the second public comment.
Okay, that works.
So, just to respect the public. Okay, so that does close the first public comment. We have consent agenda. I don't think so. Do we need you anymore, Ross?
It'd be better, I think, if it was like in an executive summary.
Yeah, can we publish it, maybe, and then discuss it at the next meeting?
Why don't we do both?
I do appreciate your volunteer spirit, though. You were really going to fall on the sword there.
Thank you.
So we have our consent agenda 25-034. Are you ready for that, or you want me to? Okay.
The consent agenda 25034 includes the minutes of the June 23, 2025 regular meeting, the check register dated through July 11, 2025, the MML Workers Compensation Fund Board of Trustees election, candidate election, and the number four is the decommissioning and sale of the Groseal Police Department vehicle 16-2, and I move that we approve the consent agenda 25-034.
Second?
Second.
And that is the, that's the complete.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Action item number one was changed to a discussion item, which brings us to zoning text amendments. I just need to scroll down to it. That's the master plan. Okay. I move that the Groseal Township Board hereby approves zoning text amendments to C1 Convenience Commercial District to the Township Code of ordinances.
Second.
So the C1 Convenience Commercial District pertains to only one property within the township, the Airport Inn, which is located, I don't know, 400 yards that way. Under current zoning standards, the site is non-conforming under 285-6.4 area and bulk regulations. The proposed zoning text amendment provides a property owner with the opportunity to improve the physical condition of the business without the need to seek variances from the zoning board of appeals. These zoning text amendments were approved by the Planning Commission at a public hearing held on June 30, 2025. So for folks that aren't all spun up on zoning, if you have a structure that's non-conforming, because maybe your lot's too small and they changed the zoning, or your structure's too big, or your roof doesn't have the right pitch, or however many other things, you would need a zoning board of appeals variance for each and every single thing you want to change, which can become cumbersome, especially for like, well, for homeowners and business owners, right? So the intent is that we're going to update this single weird tiny little district to allow them to operate more as a business and less as a, I don't know, probably under residential zoning rules, so. Any questions or concerns regarding that? Okay?
The one I have a question on is, I drove by there, and it's just a small sliver of property. I mean, a really tiny sliver between Airport Inn and the house that's next to it on Grow Road. And so it says that the side yard is going from, I think, is it 20 feet to five feet, or 25 to five feet? I would hate to see them build something right on that property line within five feet without it going through.
Well, so they're already at five feet.
Right, but this makes it sound like they can do more without a zoning variance.
So if I'm not mistaken, the current Airport Inn is already five feet from the property line?
Mm-hmm.
So in order to make them in compliance with current zoning, we would have to move the zoning requirement to five feet.
But what I'm getting at is, so you have the Airport Inn and the set sliver of property, and then you have property in front of it, right, which has a parking lot right now. So by having that side yard five feet, does that mean that they could put something like they've been talking about, maybe expanding an outside area or doing different things? Does that mean they can build more in front of Airport Inn that's right on that property line? Because I mean, it's already right there. Like, you don't want to expand something like that without it getting looked at.
Theoretically, expand forward towards Grow Road, yes.
And so instead of having a huge building like right here on you, you could now have a longer area where it's right on you. I just think that one, you would want to look at without an automatic approval.
I think she's got a point there. What I think she's saying is this five-foot line is now having a structure that's X number of feet.
Yeah.
They could go and expand the facility some way so that there was more of it. It's almost like with the golf course, West Shore and the lady, the doctor, she's got that big building coming up there.
So I think...
I think she might see something there that merits some more thought.
So, don't you typically get, you have a discussion before things like this are approved, Ross, with the neighboring, the neighbors on the sides, don't you? They get an opportunity to provide input, is what I'm saying.
It depends on the level of the project.
The zoning, recommended zoning change.
Oh, the zoning change, yeah. There was a public hearing, public notification process, and we followed that same, yeah, we followed that process.
So the neighbors had an opportunity to be able to comment?
Correct, yeah, 100%.
Yeah, because otherwise I would have had the same question, Mickey, is that I just, I know that they have, they have, by how we, if it's by ordinance, but you have to, you know, notify them that there could be a change.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Yep, we follow that legal requirement.
If we don't move it to five feet, it'll still be a non-conforming structure and still require variances for any work.
Correct.
We have an ordinance that says any non-conforming structure, so if your structure's non-conforming for any reason, regardless of what side you're doing the work on, you still have to go to ZBA.
Like, I would leave the 20, to change the 20 for the front yard, but I would take that five feet out of there.
Then it wouldn't matter, because they're non-conforming.
Well, they can do, when you think about that parking lot on Grow, they can move it over further?
They can't, because they're non-conforming. They would still have to go to ZBA. Like, example, my house is non-conforming because I'm like three feet from the property line. So if I wanted to add to my deck in the back, even though that is conforming, I still have to go to ZBA.
Would that be on the property line, though?
No, doesn't matter, because I'm non-conforming. Can't make any changes.
For any reason at all.
You can't make any changes at all if it's non-conforming.
Okay. So has there been, I apologize, I can't, I try to watch, but I miss some meetings online. Has there been a meeting? Has a homeowner weighed in on that, or?
No, no. That's just, we notified them of the zoning changes. We posted it publicly. We had a planning commission meeting, so they were aware of the meeting date, and we haven't heard anything. And we don't have a proposal just yet that we've reviewed, so we don't know exactly what they want to do, but this just allows them, I think that they were wanting to do like ADA enhancements and stuff like that, because right now it's not ADA compliant.
Right, ADA I'm all for, but I also heard they want to have like an outdoor spot where you can have tables and different things, and I didn't know if they were going to like try and build a bar or anything else.
No, and they wouldn't be able to, I don't think they would be able to build a bar outside, open air, but, because our zoning doesn't allow that. But, yeah, I think there's some outdoor seating that they were talking about, and maybe some parking, additional parking, but that's it. It's nothing.
So if this goes through and they want to make a change, they still want to have to pull permits and get it looked at, or no?
Yeah, no, they would have to submit a full site plan to make sure that it adheres to our zoning ordinances.
And Russ, the guy that lives there next door, I know him.
Yeah.
He would have opportunity to comment about this.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Ross. Any other comments on this one? All right. So, action item number two, zoning text amendments to C1 Convenience Commercial District. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carries unanimously. Action item number three. What about you? It's the resolution. Does he have the ability to read the motion by title only of the resolution?
Yeah, he would just need to, if he doesn't want to read the entire resolution, just ask to approve the resolution as presented in the board packet.
So, so what the resolution is, I move to set a public hearing on a special assessment for Elba Island.
Second?
Thank you.
Does that suffice, Brian, or does that have to be different? Yeah, you might have to add "in accordance with the attached resolution."
Correct.
Yes, because it's a whereas, you know, three pages of whereas, so.
Okay. And so the history on this is the following, the following is the next step in the Elba Island Private Road Special Assessment Process. This resolution sets a public hearing for the July 28 Township Board Meeting in which the special assessment roles will be reviewed. And would you like to add, so, and I will also say that the resolution that is included in the, this is, as part of the
Packet?
Packet. That, what else do we need to say, then?
I would just say that there, is that, are you good? Okay. There are multiple steps to a special assessment, various processes and various public hearings, and this process has been outlined by our attorney. This is the next step in that process. We have to have an additional public hearing on the 28th of July, and once that public hearing takes place, then the special assessment will be in effect, so.
Derek, are you saying that this is in accord with administrative law?
That is correct, yes. Thank you for the summary. But yeah, that is the case. Do you need the action item restated, Brian?
Yes, I do, and then I'll need a second after that.
All right. So, I would propose an amendment, Kevin, for the action item to say the following. I move Groseal Township Board set the public hearing on special assessment for Elba Island in accordance with the attached resolution. Are you okay with that amendment?
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Forgot I was the one that had to say that for a second. All right, and action item number four is also to you.
Did this number?
I have it in front of me. You want me to read it?
Action item number four is the approval of intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County Roads. I move that we approve that.
Second?
Thank you. The recommendation is the Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby approves the attached intergovernmental agreement between the County of Wayne and Groseal Township. The history and explanation is the following, it is an intergovernmental agreement between
The history and explanation is the following, what is an intergovernmental agreement between Groseal Township and Wayne County, which outlines a financial arrangements, arrangements for a cost share for various road improvements. The township proposed roadwork for summer 2025, Elba Island Drive and various concrete roads sectioning totaling uh, $822,352.50. The township solicited the county to contribute to the cost of these projects, ultimately securing $411,176.25 from the county to assist with these projects. The county funding would not be available to the township if it wasn't for the road millage. As a match requirement is necessary to be eligible for these funds. Work is scheduled to commence within the next two to four weeks. It's worth noting, Groseal Township promised to its residents during various millage requests to always continue to pursue alternative funding options despite the residents' commitment of millage funds towards public infrastructure. The pursuit and receipt of these funds is an illustration of the township's commitment to this promise.
Okay, I know Mickey had a comment, and then Mark? Did you have a comment?
No, I'm good.
What's that? Oh, Margaret, okay. We'll do Mickey, then Margaret.
Mine's quick. I'm a Miller Canfield attorney and Wayne County's a client, so I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this.
Okay.
Um, this is just a quick question. So we wouldn't always receive matching? This just happens to be a situation where we are able to leverage some matching?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure residents are clear on that, that that's not always going to be the case. We're not always going to have that matching available.
Okay.
Would you like to add any comments on the matching part of that?
Uh, you did a great job with the explanation. Um, you know, this basically allows us to double the project scope over what we would have been able to do on our own. So, um, we're going to do additional roads, we're going to do additional concrete sectioning. Um, and we hope concrete will probably start in the next two weeks or so. Our contractor that was selected through competitive, competitive bid is actually, um, working on Allen Road right in front of Myers there. Right now, once they're done with that, they're supposed to come over here. Um, we were going to do the asphalt work, uh, actually the end of this month, but because of the special assessment not being completed, um, with all the public hearings, that'll probably have to wait till the beginning of August. But in the next month or so, people should start seeing this work take place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? No? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next action item is me. I move that the Groseal Township Board hereby approve the amendment of Chapter 67 Commissions, Article 14 Toll Bridge Commission, Section 67-92 Membership, as highlighted in the attached ordinance amendment.
So move, or second?
Second.
Okay, so what this is, is, um, following our previous Toll Bridge interviews, we had a brief discussion about, um, the candidates and how we would maybe like to shift the composition of the commission. Um, what this amendment does is modifies that commission, so it is four community members and one township board members, which compose the voting body of the board. In addition to our contract engineer and our finance director as non-voting members to provide the support to the five voting members. Any discussion? Okay?
We're doing it because, um, everybody was a strong candidate, but there were four that were amazing and we take our hats off to you four. So that's why we needed to increase it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that modifies the composition of the bridge commission. Next, we will have the appointment of bridge commissioners. So I move that the Groseal Township Board hereby appoints the following members to the Groseal Township Toll Bridge Commission.
Second.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Darryl McCartney, Mrs. Christine Dowhan Bailey, Mr. Chris Johnson, and Mr. Patrick Smithbauer. So, um, we interviewed, uh, six people and they were all extremely qualified. Um, some real, uh, you know, standout members of community, captains of industry, um, executive and director level experience. Uh, so it was really actually difficult for us to select the four out of the six people that we did. Um, but we think we've, we've got some really awesome individuals. We think we're going to have a really awesome bridge commission, highly qualified. Uh, the two people that are not selected, I, I don't want them to necessarily completely run off into the ether and say to hell with the township and the bridge commission because compositions of commissions change. Um, sometimes they get bigger once they've been established. It's just this board initially decided we wanted this particular commission to be agile in the beginning because they're building the whole framework for this thing, right? They're, they're building it from the ground up, so we want a small coalition of individuals that can get the job done. Um, and then maybe down the road, we will make the commission bigger, so. Um, any further discussion on that?
No, sir.
Okay. In that case, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. And, uh, you'll see, um, resumes and applications in the board packet, anybody that's particularly interested in that. And then, uh, we have another action item here from DPS, so back over to Kevin.
There we go. I move to approve, uh, contract with Parking Base. And the recommendation is the township of Groseal, the township board hereby authorizes the execution of the attached contract between Groseal Township and Valet Manager, Inc., also known as Parking Base.
Second?
Thank you. The history is, and purpose is the Groseal Toll Bridge Pass system is managed and serviced by two separate entities. The first entity is PSX. They are the provider and servicer of onsite equipment, hardware for the Bridge Pass system. This includes all the readers, tags, and onsite computer equipment. PSX was the vendor utilized by the Groseal Bridge Company prior to the township's purchase of the bridge. As such, the township continued this relationship in accordance with the assigned service contract portion of the purchase agreement. The second entity is a company called Valet Manager, Inc. Uh, Parking Base, which is the provider of the Bridge Pass website, the keeper of all the Bridge Pass account data, profile, tra, transaction reporting, uh, transaction history, uh, interface, side of the operation, and overall IT support of the Bridge Pass system. The township has a pay-for-service arrangement with PSX. Parking Base is a term contract with fixed fees depending upon accounts and transactions processed. The contract addressed by this action item is the attached Valet Manager, Inc. The contract is for a one-year term, which allows the township to have the stability in short, in the short term of the current operational system while not being obligated long-term in case the township desires to use a different provider, different system, or change in operations, bridge closure, that the bridge closure requires a different scope of, uh, providing, of provided services. The contract has been reviewed and approved by the township's legal counsel. Derek, do you have any comments you would like to make?
Nope, that, uh, you did a good job. Any questions?
Any questions?
Any from, any from the board?
And referred, when I refer to approve by legal counsel, uh, she's reviewed it and she's fine with it, or made the amendments that were necessary.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resol, or, uh, action carries. All right, so, uh, this last one we added. Um, I move that the Groseal Township Board approve a resolution of support for Senate Bill 459 of 2025 with the resolution attached.
Second.
So, um, I reached out to Senator Camilleri a couple of weeks back. I knew he was working on Senate Bill 459. I asked him if it would help him at all if he received a resolution of support from the board. Um, we got this drafted, so, uh, just to kind of summarize it. Um, it essentially says Groseal is an island community and we're in trouble if we can't reach the mainland. Township residents regularly pay tolls across the toll bridge, but especially during times when the Wayne County Bridge is down. Um, this resolution, or, uh, not this resolution, the Senate bill will generate a, um, income tax relief on your state of Michigan taxes for the user fees you use across the bridge. Um, that it'll, uh, offset the financial burden on residents and help promote equity and fairness and lowering transportation costs. Um, so any questions about that? This is non-binding. It's just us sending a letter to the Senate saying we, hey, this would really help us out, so.
I've got a question, if, I may. Is this going to be, uh, retroactive through the last closing or is this whatever, it's going to be from this point forward?
I mean, I think it would be active for the tax year that the bill, that the Tax Act of 1967 is modified.
Okay.
So.
That's it for me.
And then if it's a tax credit and not a deduction, which is going after a tax credit, that's worth a lot more than a deduction. Cause it'll reduce the amount of tax you owe versus just a deduction on your income. So if he can get it, that's fantastic.
Yeah, and, um, tax credits are good because they don't necessarily, depending on how they structure it, right? Like a deduction might not matter for you if you make very little money or a lot of money, right? But a credit, you always get a credit, so.
Yeah.
It makes a difference. Have I researched that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. We are on to our discussion items, but before we do that, take a five-minute recess.
Nope, we, well, action item number nine.
Uh, yes.
I have to read those all eleven items up there?
Which one is nine?
Um, so this is, let me find it because it's at the top instead of the bottom.
Only move?
Okay, uh, I move, it's, it's at the top, so it's actually page three. So I move that the township board resolve for the right of refusal to purchase, eight, actually, let me read the whole. I move the Groseal Township Board hereby accept and authorize the purchase of vacant property located at 20443 West River, Groseal, Michigan, 48138, identified as parcel number 73014020184008 from Wayne County Treasurer for a minimum bid offered on the right of refusal list of tax foreclosed property for a price of $10,018.46. This is the minimum bid price that was established and includes delinquent taxes, fees, penalties, interest, and any cost to date associated with preparing this property for auction and administering the sale.
Second.
Okay, so, um, when a, so we collect taxes, but Wayne County kind of runs taxes. So, um, someone has failed to maintain their, uh, taxes, fees, and penalties and interest on a property. Um, Wayne County has seized that property. So now one of two things will happen. We will either take it for the minimum bid of $10,018.46 or Wayne County will send it to public auction, in which case I believe the money goes just to cover the, well, they can't have a windfall, so. Um.
They, they can.
They can, but it's, either it has to go back to the property owner that went, was delinquent or potentially it could go back to the county, the, any additional revenue above and beyond the tax, um, debt that is owed.
So it has to be, it has to be reinjected into the county, government economy then?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so it's either us or Wayne County gets it. So it's, I guess my two cents is I think we should get it instead of Wayne County, but.
So, so actually what happens is if, if a parcel is foreclosed upon and Wayne County chooses to dispose of it, um, they offer the community the right of first refusal, and actually who's ahead of us is the state of Michigan. So it was state of Michigan, if the state of Michigan doesn't want it, then the local municipality can choose to pick it up for the, the cost of the delinquency. Um, and then if the, the township or community that the, the property is located within chooses not to pick it up, then it goes to public auction. And then anybody can bid on this parcel and any revenue goes back to the way that, you know, back to the county in the way that we explained.
Okay. So any questions on that?
I do have a comment. This is the second property that's been foreclosed upon, foreclosed on, uh, the island over the last two years or three years. And I'm, I, we need to have some kind of policy and procedure in place for, th, this doesn't happen very often, I understand. And we need to have a policy and procedure in place because there have been court cases that, uh, the Michigan Supreme Court has, uh, come down saying that counties can't have, uh, a windfall, uh, uh, when the, the property is sold. So for instance, a, uh, property, the, the tax, the foreclosure amount might be, uh, $18,000 and the property is worth, uh, $250,000. That the, what the Supreme Court said was the county can't keep that individual's money that owned the property. They pay the tax, they pay the fees, they pay the expenses, and then what's left over can go back to the, uh, person that owned the property. And I think that we need to look at what kind of community we want to be. If, if the properties, for instance, that are on the island, if they were in another community, say, uh, let's say Detroit, uh, or a, a larger community possibly, they would have, uh, options possibly to, uh, get help with, uh, keeping the property, paying the tax, setting up a process to, uh, keep the house or property going, from going into foreclosure. It's a complicated process. It takes time. There are rules and regulations. I think the island has to put together some kind of rule, regulation, policy, and procedure on whether they want to be taking property and, uh, keeping the windfall, my word, uh, or keeping the money, uh, rather than making the money go back to, or helping the money go back to, um, the person that originally owned the property. So there are different types of cases, but I, I think we have to think that through.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
I have a question on that.
Sure?
Situation here, as I understand it, if the property was ultimately sold for something in excess of the back due costs, the, the final increase would be paid back to the property owner. But now, for how long is that window of opportunity sitting there? I mean, let's suppose we buy this piece of property and we keep it 10 years and then we sell it, make a capital gain. Are we supposed to give the capital gain to the guy that owned it originally? That, that, it's not clear on.
Yeah, we don't necessarily have to sell it, but I, I, I know what Kevin's saying is we need a policy, not that there is a policy.
I, I think I could explain things and hopefully clarify things a little bit, so.
Not for us.
To Kevin's point, to the treasurer's point, um, there was a, a Supreme Court case that basically stated that municipalities, governmental entities can't receive a windfall from tax foreclosures if they pull it off tax foreclosure and they sell it for a substantial profit. Um, so that, that case is out there, but there are certain requirements of the property owner to receive the differential between the taxes, the tax amount, the past due tax amount, and whatever that governmental entity disposes that property for. They are only eligible for those funds, that windfall, that, that reimbursement of that profit if they follow the process that is necessary to receive those, those funds. So they can't just sit idle and receive a check. That they have to do certain things to be eligible for that. And to the clerk's point, the, the township doesn't necessarily have to dispose of this property. They could, the township could retain this property and use it for a public purpose. Um, you know, there's a variety of different options available to the township when they purchase a, a property through tax foreclosure. Uh, I would also, to piggyback on what the treasurer had mentioned, the township were, also doesn't have a policy with regards to what, what properties constitute, um, something that we want to purchase, okay? If you look at page nine of your packet, there are maybe eight or nine different properties on that list. Usually when this. Usually when this list comes to the township, we review the fair market value uh, valuation versus the minimum bid price to determine whether there's a significant difference. And um, that potentially indicates value to the township to pick that piece of property up. We take a look at whether it's buildable, we take a look at its location, is it waterfront? You know, is there value or a purpose for the township to purchase that parcel out of tax foreclosure? That primarily is done administratively. Obviously, it's coming to you this evening to the board because it requires board approval and we're discussing, you know, the aspects of it. There's information here about the lot, its value, all the parameters of it. So you ultimately make the decision, but leading up to this, the administrative review is the only review about which one of these parcels are the ones that justify a purchase. So, um, I think if we're gonna talk about policy, I think it probably would behoove us to in, include in that policy the review process of this parcel list to determine um, more, by more than just administration, what parcels are, have value to the township to purchase.
Well, the, the goal, thank you for clarifying that, Derek. The, the, the goal is to get the, the the foreclosed property, my understanding, the goal is to get the foreclosed property back on the ta- tax rolls as soon as possible and get the, get the, you know, get their tax being, the, paying the tax for the property on ti- in a timely fashion. The issue that comes up with this is there are, we do have a lot of seniors on the island. Let's say somebody has a, uh, has dementia or somebody just for some unknown reason is not capable of managing the tax process, the tax foreclosure, and it's not found out until the property's actually in the process of being foreclosed. Uh, what I'm saying is we have to have a, uh, some, something that we can go by and a group that we can refer these folks to, or if, in other words, if, if the individual that owns the property is unable to make make a decision, or they have some kind of uh, uh, you know, need a uh, the court to appoint a, somebody for them, we, we have to think that through. And, and I think there are multiple questions here that.
Yeah, and, and I think you're referring to assistance prior to foreclosure, because once it's gotten to this point, this property is being disposed of by the county. Either we're taking it or it's going to public auction. It's already, that ship has sailed. I think you're coming from a great spot and saying, hey, look, what kind of community do we wanna be as far as not letting it get to this point by potentially providing assistance to people that may be having some problems with their taxes? And, and you could work along with the county treasury on that because they're the ones that deal a lot with, you know, the foreclosure process, but.
Well, a lot of communities that are lar- many larger communities like the cities, uh, the larger cities, they have, you know, senior citizen groups, uh, the Michigan, uh, Michigan, Wayne County, there, there are groups that could come in. So if we knew ahead of time that a person was nearing foreclosure, we could pre- help and be preemptive that they wouldn't lose their home, uh, or their property. And if uh, if after the, and this is after the fact, after, and again, I know the township has followed all the rules and regulations, but the question is, do we wanna balance our budget on the back of somebody who lost their house? And I don't want, I don't think that's the, the kind of uh, treasurer, I, I don't wanna be taking old.
So I wanna, I wanna, you, you got good points, Kevin. I wanna refocus the discussion though, because you, you, you made some great points about what kind of community we wanna be, and maybe that's something we need to do a working group about or something. But right now, we need to decide, are we gonna buy this property for ten thousand dollars?
Correct.
And we're not foreclosing on them.
They're already foreclosed.
Purchasing property that's already been foreclosed on, so it's a difference.
That's correct.
Yep.
Yeah. And it's got some real value to it.
Yes, it does.
So, uh, I'll, I'll call a question unless there's anybody that's got anything significant to.
No, you can call a question, please.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, let's do a five-minute recess.
Mr. Clerk. Real quick, hey, I see some members of our new commission here. You wanted to give them an opportunity to come up and say something now before we break?
Uh, I was gonna do that, but we gotta swear them in at the next board meeting, so maybe that would be more appropriate. They'd have a little more notice. Well, you're welcome to come say hi if you like, but we're gonna swear you in next board meeting and so we don't put you on the spot, so you'll be ready, so.
We're just happy you're here.
Yeah. Thank you guys very much, and if you all wanna come up and say anything, you're more than welcome to.
Let's give them a hand at least.
Okay. Yeah, well, welcome. And uh, with that.
If, no? Yes? No? Everybody's good? Okay.
Five minutes.
Are you kidding? Do we have to pay you after seeing your resume?
Okay, we are back from our slightly longer than five-minute recess and getting into discussion items. The first one is the RFP for Salary Benchmarking and Wage Survey. So, um, let me find that. It's just a big packet.
Uh, it's ninety-six.
Okay.
You want mine?
One seventeen?
Oh, that was, ninety-six is way off cause of the PDF stuff.
One seventeen, I think.
One seventeen on the PD, I see it there. Okay. Um, so this has been brought up several times. It started with the last board, brought up again with this board, that we uh, don't have a standardized salary system here in Groseal, um, which maybe served us pretty well back in the day when it was a real small operation. Uh, it's obviously not that anymore, so there's been a lot of desire by this board to codify some of that. Um, the township reached out to our current auditing forum, uh, who does dedicated work in this regard. Um, and they provided us a proposal. So this is from Yo and Yo. Uh, so if you, I'm sure everyone's looked through the, the proposal. Let me get down to their cost here.
And I don't know if the copy that was in the packet actually has the cost. I believe.
Yeah, it looks like it's whited out.
Yeah, uh, just because if, if the board decided they wanted to put together an RFP or have, have administration, we didn't want to put them at a disadvantage by having their price out there, but I believe everybody received a copy via email of their proposal, so I know what those costs are.
Okay, let's not state the cost if anybody recalls it from the email packet, so. Um, so anyway, Yo and Yo is, uh, they've been with us a while. Um, they've done, from what I can tell, good work. I'm sure Teresa and Kevin could tell us more about what they think of their capability in this regard. Teresa, I don't know what you, you have two cents on the topic?
So probably about a year, year and a half ago, Yo, Yo and Yo is always looking at it, you know, expanding its services, providing the best services they can for their clients. Um, so they um, merged with a firm, it's called Amy Sell Talent. Um, she's, as they've learned, she's very widely known in the um, Detroit area, Michigan area, in the Ann Arbor area. This is what her and her staff do. Um, so they actually merged with, and that this firm merged with Yo and Yo recently so that Yo and Yo can provide these um, HR advisory services to their clients. Um, so what they, you know, they get information from us, um, she, they have the resources to get the market surveys and develop the market surveys that we would need for the various positions that we have.
Okay, um, so I guess the discussion tonight is, do we want to do a, do we wanna do an RFP? Right? This isn't an action item, we're not voting on anything. Do we wanna do an RFP to hire somebody, potentially Yo and Yo, to benchmark salaries and provide us with a, a structure for employee compensation?
Yeah, I believe we should. I, I, I totally agree with that, that concept.
I didn't feel like this was a particularly contentious issue or anything. I think everybody.
There's no contention here. The, I think it's smart to have that because you could get yourself in trouble if someone was more highly compensated for the, than someone else by, by quirk and it's unfair. I've been here all these years or, or whatever.
Yeah, I think the only drawback is, and um, maybe there's a, in whatever structure we do adopt, there's a uh, a mechanism for hiring people with select skills, right? Like an example would be like the, the dep- or the finance director, the township manager, you know, there might be certain people that, you know, you, we can't hire you in as a township employee, level five, step two, because your value is much higher than that. So I think we would wanna look at some other kind of maybe mechanism on top of that, but generally I think this is a good idea and we should, we should do it.
I, I do wanna mention one thing. So, um, both of these discussion items, the, the RFP for Salary Benchmarking and the entrance audit, I, I don't believe we have budgeted funds in this fiscal year for that. So we would just have to identify those funds and we would have to understand what that does to the budget. Um, if we're gonna move money to these different, um, you know, uh, professional services, where that's coming from. So I just want you guys to be aware of that.
So, um, can we do the RFPs, find out, and then, then we can maybe see like, alright, we can absorb this here or there?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, alright.
Can I put one more point in on that?
Let's get Kevin, he hasn't talked in a while, then we'll come back to you, Bill.
Um, one of the things that I, it, it says, Salary Benchmarking and Wage Survey, I think that what we have to include, uh, we should all, most of the time, these include uh, salaries in your geographic area as well as benefits in the area. And we, I think Groseal offers a benefit package that is probably among the best in the down river area. So that should be included, I would hope, in, in this process to make, uh, so that we're comparing you know, apples to apples, oranges to oranges, and uh, somebody might make a little bit more money in another community, but the benefits they receive may not be as lucrative as what we have here. So I think that's important, and we also can include uh, benchmarking possibly to uh, some of the corporate uh, corporate companies or unions that uh, are in the area. So, thank you.
Okay, and Bill, I think you had a comment.
I think that there's also the need to get some advice on how to deal with a situation where you have an exceptional person. Now, what I'm getting at is that this person in a hierarchy might have a certain position, but everybody around the place calls on him for other pieces of information because he or she is quick to understand or has a, an ability that they haven't got the foresight to tap into. Uh, those people are, are unique, and sometimes because you want to hold them, you might need to, to find some kind of a reward, but how do you do that in the system? The, uh, uh, every company's going to have one of these guys somewhere if it's big enough. But I, I think being aware of that, if we're trying to have something that gives us some solidity against trouble, making a note to investigate, that would make sense.
Okay, thanks, Bill, Mark?
No, actually, I'm all set, I just answered my own question, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, any further discussion, remember, it's not an action item, right, we're just saying if we, what we think about this. So we think it's a good idea, we might want to go to RFP and, okay.
Can I make a point?
Sure, sorry, I missed you.
That's okay, um, so that, I would just want to better understand the timing for, for us to understand, so if it gets, if it comes back and it says, well, one person is paid like thirty grand less than they should be, then maybe we look at doing a mid-year, but otherwise, I would assume it would go for the next budget year? And so, just to understand the timing so that we get it in time for that?
Teresa and I had a conference call with, uh, this vendor and we discussed timing. And we had told them that our priority would be to have these results back by December, January, um, when we're getting into the, the fiscal year preparation, the next fiscal year preparation. Um, and they, they felt that like that was definitely achievable to be able to gather that information and have the report back by then.
Thank you, and then also, if we can break out the cost for wages versus benefits because we don't have the budget, you know, it might be where like wages go this year, benefits next year, or whatever that may be. And then one last thing, just because I want to beat Margaret out, is that my fire staff, I think are really underpaid, so I'll be really curious to see what it says, so Margaret, I had to beat you out on that one, sorry.
I'm good with it, I'm equal opportunity.
Okay.
Considering that, when, when does the contract for the police come up?
Uh, next March, April, something like that?
Well.
Yeah. Yeah, so usually you start almost six months in advance.
Well, my, my concern is that, uh, we do this more quickly, as quickly as possible, so that we do have those figures in front of us because, uh...
They do kind of have a de facto pay structure though, don't they, over at PD?
Yes, they do.
Well, the, the management does.
Not.
Not, and that's, that seems to be a big issue. So I think, uh, and because we're coming up on having to choose a new, uh, police chief in this, uh, I think by Jan, before January, I would hope, and, uh, so I, I would like, that, that seems to be an issue on the board of, what, are we paying enough to management? So, thank you.
Okay.
One other point, just a moment, Mickey stimulated a thought. She was talking about compensation for salary and then compensation for pensions. I would think that a, a note to the fact that we should be sure to make sure that if we're communicating benefits to somebody, that they understand what their total package is, because they could be maybe getting a little less annual income, but a heck of a bigger pension.
Right.
So we would want to make that clear, so that, that note should be in there, I think, to, to keep that solid.
Yeah, um, I think we would definitely have them take a look at, um, you know, total compensation, which would include your pay and your benefits, definitely.
Okay, so I think, uh, I think we've, I think we're pretty much out of consensus on that, so I suppose that'll become an action item sometime in the near future, so. The next thing, uh, we're going to discuss is the entrance audit request for proposal document, so this is the document that is actually requesting, um, proposals. So this is the RFP itself, not just a idea of an RFP, um, and essentially, this was bore out of, I, I wouldn't say concern, but maybe an abundance of caution, um, you know, we've had a lot of staff turnover, uh, in significant and key positions. We've had almost an entirely new board where there was a lot of legacy board members before. Um, and this is just for us to take a look at all of our finances, going back to a certain period of time, I don't know what it says in here, uh, through April one, twenty nineteen, till March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, which would be five fiscal years, um, prior to, well, this board, so. Um, I, I looked through it, it seems pretty comprehensive, uh, essentially, take a look at the accounts, make sure everything's in the right spots and that, all the funds are being tracked properly. I don't know if you have anything addition to add to that, Teresa?
Um, going through this with, with, uh, the township manager, um, many of the things listed are what our, our standard auditor, auditors do. Um, I, I understand that you're trying to get to the next layer, uh, beyond what, what they do. And, um, you know, one of the things in RFP, and it's, it's standard language, that, you know, we may request oral interviews. I would say absolutely, we need to have all interviews before they, they submit their proposals because I, I want them to understand the level that the board is looking for.
Okay, is that listed in this RFP anywhere that you?
It is, it's, it does say, in that standard, that we may request oral interviews and, um, looking at the responses we get, you know, I would say absolutely, anyone who responds, we would have them come in for an interview and we'd, we'd select a committee.
Can, can I ask you?
To make sure we get to that level, because, you know, going through, um, you know, the, our standard audit covers internal controls, it covers risk assessments. Um, there's a level of unpredictability when they come in to do the audit, I don't know everything they're going to check on, um, and I want to make sure that you get what you're, what you're looking for without the finance department having to duplicate a lot of work as well.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to ask you, um, I know this is very much the supervisor's, uh, I don't want to say baby, but i- it's something he wants to do. Do you, as the finance director, you know, it's something I want to do too, but I want to make sure that it actually has benefit, right? So do you, as the finance director, see this as a, as we're going to, this is going to be a good thing?
Depends on how you define good, I mean, in, in one respect, it gives you an answer one way or another. Would things be any different when they're done than they are now? You know, I, I think I've implemented some positive changes since I've started, it's different administration, different people. Um, how do they look at four or five years ago and then come to me and say, well, this wasn't done? Yeah, but this is what we're doing now, and so it's a lot of time, effort and money and for us not to be any, any farther than what we are.
So, and that makes sense to me, right? Like, if you're, I, I, you're looking at it from a processes perspective and it's like, okay, well, you guys weren't doing this right in twenty twenty-one, and you're like, well, we're doing it now, so, um, so you don't think we're going to unearth some, you know, treasure chest full of gold buried under Derek's office or anything like that?
No, honestly, I, I do not, um, so.
Okay, so this, from your perspective, you think this is mostly just going to be like, hey, this should have been done this way, this should have been in this account, it wasn't, but you're, you're not concerned about the actual accounting?
I've, I've also, um, changed some of the accounting and where things are being posted to, um, because I've been told in the past, sometimes things were put in other accounts just because the budget, they didn't have budget in one account, but they had budget in another account. It's like, okay, if you don't have the budget in that account, put it where it belongs and that's why you amend your budget.
Right, yeah.
Um, so I've, I've done those modifications, um, you know, we had a non-employee, a non-employee having a credit card. I pulled that, um, so, you know, and with my former, I call it my auditor years, I was an auditor for twenty-five years. I, you know, it, follow the rules.
Nope, yep, that's why you're here. Okay, so that, I think that's all my questions.
I'm just, you know, we don't, we don't use a PO system, but we have other procedures in place because of that. Do I honestly think we should use it? Possibly, yes. I've also heard it was tried in the past and there were difficulties getting everyone on board with that.
Okay.
Um, so I don't want them to come in and say, well, you don't use a PO system, well, I, I know that, I mean, I, I, you know, even as an auditor of the township, it was not used, it's somewhere in between there, it was, it was tried and, um, for whatever reason, it was, you know, it was, it was dropped, but I know there were, there were issues with everyone being on board with it and, and following it and, and enforcing it, I guess.
Okay.
Um, so I'm concerned that things like that are going to happen and it's not going to, we're not going to get the true, and it depends on how you evaluate the value of being told by another firm that everything's okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I, I guess my question would be going to Derek, did you come up the timeframe on this, go back to twenty nineteen? I, I guess my question, because I, I spoke with, uh, the supervisor as well, I thought we were going back two election cycles, eight years.
It, it's up for, yes, there was a number that was put in there just simply as a guess.
Okay.
That, that's one of the things we wanted to discuss with you is, you know, review the proposal, see what you think, does it meet with what you, you wanted? The length of time, the things we're looking at, were there any specifics that you guys wanted to include in here? Um, so it's all up for, for debate and conversation.
Thank you.
So I just have one quick one, um, we mentioned the cost and can we afford to, you know, do we have the funds to support the RFP for the Salary Benchmarking? So I guess the same question could be put towards the entrance audit. If there were a priority order, I'm going to strongly suggest the Salary Benchmarking versus the other, that's just my feeling. I just really do not want to go through another situation like, like we did this year of debating about people's salaries. I don't think that's the professional way to handle things, that's just my opinion.
So this was budgeted, wasn't it? The entrance audit, didn't we, no, we didn't budget, so it's an unbudgeted expense as well, so, okay.
It's not in our current budget, no.
I'd, I'd like to make a couple comments about, uh, this entrance audit. What we're, we're looking for is, again, for lack of a better way to say it, we're, we're trying to find the best practices, uh, going forward. Uh, there are, uh, uh, suggestions, rules, regulations that, uh, auditors and, and follow. What we'd like to do is do a deeper dive to see where we've done it right, where we have made mistakes, where we can make, uh, do it better. Uh, that's, that's what this does, many corporations, the federal government, the federal courts, uh, they have, when, when you have a ma, major turnover in management, they come in and they do a audit to see, so, and, and what it does is the audit protects the people coming in and it also protects the people going out, uh, so we see what, uh, what has happened in the past and we see what's happening, you know, we can make adjustments, uh, going forward, uh, and I will say that, uh, Teresa and I, the finance director and I have talked about these kind of things and, uh, she has made major improvements and taken major steps to do, to do it the way that the state of Michigan's treasurer's office suggests, and, uh, I think all of those are very good, important things. Uh, we're, we're going to look and make sure that, uh, I, I, and, and that the, the years back, uh, one of the things that happens is as you find mistakes and errors, or if you find something that really worked well, uh, the auditor can follow it back a little bit, if, if they have to follow it back farther than five years, that, that might be the situation. Uh, but I, I think that those are important to, uh, to, for the board to, to know that where, where, where we're starting from. I know we're a little bit late, they're already into this, but, uh, I think it is a good thing.
Okay, any other comments on the RFP for entrance audit?
Support doing it, I think it's a good idea, I think you found so many things, Teresa, that, um, and you can only check so many records, right? I mean, you have only so much time in the day, so I would think you would be a key person that when we get the results, we can talk to you and say, what do you think about these different, um, types of recommendations, but I do, I support it, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Derek, I'm sorry, one more thing, so if, for those who have, I guess, suggestions, questions, want some changes, did you want that submitted to you via email? So we can go through it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that how you want it done, alright?
Maybe, um, you know, we could put it on the agenda for the twenty-eighth for consideration and then the vote goes in whatever direction it goes and, um, between now and then, provide your comments to me and I can make those changes between now and, and the meeting on the twenty-eighth, if that's the pleasure of the board or, or whatever direction you guys want.
Okay, no, that's, thank you, that'd be good.
Okay, then our final discussion item is the master plan. Um, I'll preface this by saying, I guess, uh, we all probably know this from our meetings with the subcommittee of the planning commission. Um, I guess it wasn't even a subcommittee, just a couple folks from the planning commission, but the township board's role in this is very binary, right? We either accept the master plan they've sent us, or we reject it with, um, deliberate, uh, either concerns or directives, right? So like, we could reject it and be like, this doesn't do enough to, and this is just an example, address the overabundance of ZBA variances granted in R1B regions, right, or zones. Um, so that's kind of the position we're in, uh, we can't direct them to make specific changes. We can tell them we're not satisfied with the changes they've made or that their changes haven't gone far enough. Um, and I'll just start the discussion so that we can get the ball rolling, so, um, my position is, I think, you know, they've aggressively stated they're going to address R1E, which is a zoning overlay that triggers these thirty thousand foot lots. A great example of this is, uh, what's the subdivision at the back of HCL Jackson? It's, um, I don't know, it's a curvy road, it's an affluent subdivision, right? Big lots, beautiful green lawns, um, you know, houses that you could maybe even call some of them three-story, but definitely vaulted ceilings. And those are the kind of subdivisions you have to build with that R1E zoning because you have these giant lots, so you have to get your money back on the house, right? Um, and, and houses like that cost five hundred, eight hundred, thousand, a million dollars. So my concern, or my, I'm glad R1E is potentially being repealed, my only concern with the master plan is, and it's not any specific line items, it's that I don't feel like it goes far enough to address housing, and I won't use the term affordable housing because everybody thinks that, that means low-income housing, but, uh, housing for, for people that just need a two-hundred thousand dollar house, right? I know our property values are a lot higher, um, so it's a little bit harder to do, but you can do it in smaller lots, in deliberate developments, not in current neighborhoods. Um, so that's really my only concern, is that I, I think we could go further with like helping out the young, the young people trying to come to Groseal, child, childbearing age folks, and then probably some of the older people that want to downsize.
I agree with you a hundred percent on that, that would be my focus too, would be the housing aspect, but also along, I'm sorry, I had to make a step on anybody who did. But it would also be the, uh, our, our Macomb district, our, our downtown district, so to speak.
So are you, so the Macomb district zoning, what they, the suggestion was prevent more single-family homes from being built on Macomb. That's what Smith Group said, the planning commission changed it to consider, try, something to the effect of consider deterring the construction of single-family.
Discourage, I think.
So are you, so the Macomb district zoning, what they, the suggestion was prevent more single-family homes from being built on Macomb. That's what Smith Group said. The planning commission changed it to consider try, something to the effect of, consider deterring the construction of single-family.
Discourage, I think.
Discourage, yeah. And I, I would agree with you on that too, Mark. Like either, like let's make Macomb a commercial district or don't, you know?
Yeah, well, it needs to be a commercial district, in, in my opinion, and many people I've talked to about it. Um, we have to show some kind of growth. I'm not trying to turn our township into a Detroit or a crazy big city, but we gotta show some kind of growth, which addresses what you've already talked about. So I won't keep, I won't go back to it. Younger families coming in. It supports our tax base, brings in more revenue, but it also brings in children, which we need for our schools. I mean, it, it's, it, it helps all the way through. Then to your point too, like, I'm not gonna need the house that I have on West River eventually. I am not gonna need all that space. So I would like to downsize something and still stay on the island, something similar to, um, Hawthorne. You know, and I, I, I think expanding something to that, say into the Meridian School, I mean, when we actually do end up rebuilding something there would be a good addition. Something to that effect, but, and I, I know I'm kind of, uh, reiterating, so I'll stop. But yeah, um, that's where I was at with it tonight. I'm glad and thankful everybody, um, voted to go ahead and, and make this a discussion item because, uh, my vote probably wouldn't have been very popular if I had to vote tonight.
Yeah, so I, I think that if we were to vote to reject it, the line items that you and I are talking about specifically would be the Macomb Street zoning for single-family housing.
Yes.
And then place stronger emphasis on constructing or encouraging construction and attracting young families to Grozil, right?
Right, and it, it does mean more affordable. It's not low-income. I'm not looking for section eight, nobody, and that's not, that's not it. It's, it's something, an entry-level type home for a young family. That's what we need. And I don't think we have enough of that to bring people in. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Can I come in a minute as well?
Sure.
Um, so, you guys, I sat there and it took me forever to go through all the materials, the stack that Ross gave me. There's some stuff in there that, um, some people are asking about, but it's in there. So I would never want to give all that material to the public because no one has that much time to read through all that. So I really do think we need a nice summary of what's in there so that we can put it online and let the residents see it and include in, hey, here's all the things that they ranked as being the most important to them and whether it's actually in there and kind of like a summary of what the provisions are. Make them, make it easy for them to look at it and say, okay, yep, this is doing what I want it to do or it's not doing what I want it to do. Um, so definitely a summary on that. And, and I mentioned earlier, I do think it's important that when we go to vote or in the next meeting that we have the planning commission here. Um, because I don't think you got what, it wasn't where everybody voted in favor of this, right? Some people opposed it, some people voted.
No, they voted unanimously, but I, I do think there was some people that.
Dissented a bit?
Yeah, prior to the vote.
But I think if you're gonna dissent, then do the dissent because then it doesn't give everybody the, you know, the sense that, that there was any. I mean, they were kind of clarified during their meeting, even though they didn't fully agree. They knew they weren't gonna get everything they wanted. They still felt it was ready to move forward to the board.
And that's true.
I think that we've got about as much recommendation out of them as we're gonna get at this point. They've worked on it for two years, two and a half years.
I'm looking more for explanation than recommendation, no, just explanation. So, so if, if it's important for, um, attracting children to the island, right? To let them come forward and say, what are the provisions that do that? And then just have a little discussion.
Well, I, if I were trying to develop that information, I've, I've talked with Brian Pollock. I've had a nice conversation with him. He's given me five names down at Semcog that we can use to have some demographics that help us analyze that situation and maybe even learn what some other communities have done in circumstance similar to ours.
But if the master plan doesn't say to do that, we won't.
Well, it's gonna be our job to respond to that, not theirs.
Well, I mean, the, yes, but like I said, we're not gonna be here forever. So we can have all these great ideas.
We're not talking to the same point right now.
Okay.
But when, when we're talking, when I'm listening to you, what I'm hearing is that it's going to be like, like, you know, one group is gonna be here for four or ten years or whatever, the next group after that, the next group. And each one of them, at that time, can look at the guidelines and adjust what they need to do at that point. That's what you're talking about.
Uh-huh.
What I'm talking about is basically for us, where do we go now from here? Talking about housing, for example, or, or, uh, building the tax base. Uh, or where do we put seniors? If we could find some nice housing for seniors on Macomb Street, I would be a happy camper. They would vacate homes they raised their kids in and that would be part of the answer to our existing situation. I also learned from those meetings, while I didn't read everything, I've read a good chunk of it. But if you take that piece of land right up at the, at Bridge and, and, now this is all wooded area, but it was a few houses at, uh, Bridge and Meridian, over to the water. There's, there's forty-foot zoned lots in there. Now, they're set up there for, for, you could double them up and make them eighty-foot. But if you wanted to cluster some housing together and get some density, it's, it's already set to go. And when you look at what it would do to traffic one way or another, they're right by the, the toll bridge. They're gonna go in and off there. There's, there's things that exist out there and I chose that one on purpose that, that might be an asset we don't even know about, you see? So, I mean, I'm gonna be gung ho when we get this thing finally passed. It, to have more meetings, we might want a couple more before we say yay. But I'm gonna be saying yay when we're done because we're gonna need to study this, get our hands into there and work on the machinery and wipe the grease off and, you know, make a new drawing and go back at it again.
Well, and anything in the near term is this board's job.
Exactly, exactly.
Cause it's one to five years. We get the first three, so, you know, that's a good point, Bill.
But we, we can do that and we can get some leadership. And to my understanding, the, the cost is, is either, either zero or very reasonable. These guys have made a living doing this. They, I, the reason I know about that, or God, it sounds so enthusiastic, is that when I was in school, I had a quantitative methods course and I wanted to research what, what impacted urban growth. But they got me thinking about things like how, you know, it's really important to take into account, how far does somebody have to drive to go to work? You're, you know, you're not gonna, if the guy's gotta drive too far, he's gonna live somewhere else. But then you have to look at that radius and say, what's going on in that radius? And then when I compare today with, with say fifteen, twenty years ago for our area, in our radius of twenty miles, we had a cluster of more people working here than that we have now. The steel mills have closed, the chemical plants have closed. And they had businesses and, and, or they had a need to consume and our people were either doctors or lawyers or druggists or something. But they had an income that allowed them from that area to live over here. Now, what I'm getting at is right now, that doesn't exist that way. That means we have to have a different idea and a different plan to make it work, you see? I mean, in, in my mind, I'm importing retirees with a big bucks for a big, nice place to live because we got a lot of recreation, a lot of stuff that's nice here. And we don't have to worry about a downturn in the economy because they've got the money coming in. Now, there's, there's ups and downs to all of it and we're gonna learn. But, but I, I'm excited about it for after that.
Okay. Other discussion? Kevin?
Um, one of the things that, or, one of the issues that I see, uh, when I'm signing checks are, we, we're finding enough income to pay for the services that the community would like. And part of that, part of the master plan process was looking at, looking forward to how we could, how we can possibly increase the, uh, uh, tax base, as, as has already been mentioned. Uh, a couple things. There are trends affecting all communities in Michigan. There are less children being born in, you know, throughout the, the state. And it's a trend elsewhere. We need to look at those trends and see how to work with those. Uh, the other thing might, it might make sense to have a public hearing about this. There seem to be more questions, uh, out there. I know that the, uh, planning commission did have a public hearing and, uh, not a lot of folks showed up. Uh, we, there were a number of people though that did show up. Uh, so with that in mind, uh, looking at the economic trends also, um, I, I think those, uh, consider a public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments on this? And we're, obviously, we'll actually debate this when it comes up as an action item again, so. Okay, then I will move on to reports. So clerk's report is me. I'll keep this very brief. Um, so, uh, I, I received several text messages from members of the rec commission stating we do have a rec master plan that was renewed in twenty-twenty-one. So, uh, that'll be good through twenty-twenty-six. It's only a five-year plan, but it's there. And, uh, given my brief tenure on rec, I just didn't know about it. So apologies to the rec department. Um, and then, uh, so the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee has been, uh, so we've been receiving some concerns about the trail system. Obviously, we're aware of it. We're working on a plan to get some sections repaired and a, uh, full trail assessment and capital improvement plan. So that's in the works and there'll be more updates on that. And I will turn it over to the treasurer for his report.
Thank you. Jamison. Uh, treasurer report summary for July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, for the month of June, Grozil Township had a total of twenty-one thou, twenty-one million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents invested in various accounts. These accounts generated a total of sixty-five thousand, one hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents in investment interest with an average interest rate of three-point-one-four percent. The June investment report can be viewed on the treasurer's section at grozil.com. Uh, the twenty-twenty-five summer property tax bills have been mailed to all Grozil property owners. If you have not received your tax bill, please contact the treasurer's office to ensure that we have the proper mailing address and to, uh, request a copy of your bill. Summer taxes are due by September fifteenth of two thousand twenty-five. Eligible residents can apply for an extension of the summer tax bill due date until February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-six. Deferralment applications are available online at the treasurer's website or at the treasurer's office. And I'd like to thank everybody that has come in and paid their taxes. Uh, thank you. Uh, another item I would like to mention is, uh, in response to Mr. Geist, uh, and I'm hoping that he is at home listening. Um, I want to clear up some misunderstandings of, that seem to be out there. Uh, the township board, not me, the township board voted four to two to extend the Compo's contract for one year and to go out to bid next year. Next year, at this time, the board can decide whether they want to go out for a contract, new contract, uh, or an R, put out an R F P for a contract and they can always revisit their decision. Also, it, as I said, it was not a unilateral decision. I, as treasurer, cannot take these actions on my own and they required board approval. Again, the vote was four to two in favor of extending the contract. I would welcome Mr. Geist to contact me at Township Hall or email me if he would like to talk about this further and I would be happy to talk with him about this process. Uh, one of the other items I wanted to mention too is, uh, both in the public and private sector, uh, to promote competitive bidding on contracts for services and products. That's just a given. That's a common process and procedure. The policy of promoting competitive bidding was not because of a concern about Mr. Compo or the Compo brothers, and I'll say that again, has nothing to do with Compo or the Compo brothers. It, it's not a reflection on them or their work. It's a best practice to go out and rebid contracts. It just, that's what people do. That's what auditors look for. It's a broad policy that applies to all contracts for all services and products. And it is a, uh, what, uh, boards are expected to do and businesses are expected to do in the, uh, private and public sector. And it's part of our, uh, what we're, uh, expected to do as, uh, uh, board members. So, uh, again, we, uh, it was passed by a, four, four votes. Uh, so it could not have been done without board support. It couldn't have done, been, it could not have been done by me unilaterally. So, thank you.
Okay. Uh, onward to Mark.
So, police commission meeting is July fifteenth, that's tomorrow. Um, communications. Uh, I've taken a closer look at some of our official communications tools while we're making a few adjustments to how we send notifications, particularly around the use of code red. It still remains a tool that we do intend upon using and leveraging. It's, it's very important. Um, I know some people feel code red should be reserved strictly for life and death emergencies. Um, however, many others, especially those not active on social media or text messaging, appreciate, uh, those phone alerts for issues like bridge closures or water main breaks. And now, we're going to aim to tailor notifications based on what you've signed up for because there's different ways to, to choose to sign up. I just really want to emphasize, and I think we forget, not everybody is technically in sync with all of the other tools out there, right? So there are some people who don't have texting. Um, they, they may not have a cell phone. Uh, so their form of communication is that landline phone call. So I, I just, I know people get frustrated, but I want others to keep in mind that there are some out there who don't have that. Uh, additionally, uh, the township website features a section called notices and e-alerts. It's a really great tool that, uh, Brian Freel put together. Um, it's just, it's part of the website and I encourage all residents to take advantage of it. Um, Brian and I are working together on launching a community e-newsletter, which will debut in September, hopefully. Uh, you can already sign up for it under the newsletter section on that notices and alerts site. Um, while my original plan was to send a printed mailer, the cost is just, I've, I've discussed this before. The cost is very high. So we're going to focus on the electronic version for now. Um, which I know voids what I just said about some people who may not have access electronically. But without having that, uh, funding to support that, there's no really good way to send a mailer out. Um, so I just want to emphasize that, um, you know, hopefully, this newsletter page will, will help, uh, point people to the right direction on certain things and, and get them to, like, let's say, the master plan quicker than maybe they did. They were, you know, finding it already. Um, with regard to the master plan, I just want to urge anybody who spoke on this, um, and additional housing, to consider the essential public infrastructure required to support it. Uh, growth does not happen in a vacuum and I know everybody understands that. But additional housing means greater need for police, fire, D P S, water treatment. We cannot responsibly, responsibly build more without ensuring our community services have the funding as well as the personnel to grow alongside. And the personnel is key because they're hard to come by. Um, I have no objection devoting to expand our tax base at all. It's, it's priority for me. And I discussed this specifically with Ross. Um, however, with the growth always comes the need for additional services and continued millage support. We cannot have additional housing without those services. And I just want to emphasize that because I don't think that was as heavily highlighted in that plan. And finally, I just really quick want to express my appreciation, um, to all commissioners, to all commission members, and they're just dedicated volunteers. While each commission has its own unique responsibilities, none is more important than the other. Every single one of them plays a vital role in supporting our community as a whole and I do want to thank all of them. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I, could I ask?
Oh, yeah, I think Kevin had a question for you.
I'm sorry. One of the questions I had is, um, what is the status of the, uh, communication commission? Uh, I thought we were, the board had, uh, talked about going and starting a communication commission with, uh, the public, with commissioners and, uh, to get public input on this.
Well, I, I believe you asked Brian that question and he answered it, but I'll answer it again. We didn't have enough. We didn't have enough qualified applicants to fill that commission role. So we are choosing right now to kind of run with Brian's support because he's done such a great job. And along with that, I'm assisting him with, you know, providing, providing input, but if there are other people that want to provide input, they're more than welcome to. But my answer is the same as the one Brian provided.
I, I think we voted to establish a Communication Commission.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
So we probably either have to repeal that or do, or continue to pursue it. So that's a discussion for another time, but.
Well, I, I would like to encourage that because I think the, tonight's a perfect.
It's not your report.
I, I'm, I'm making a comment, though. I, I think that this needs to be further, if you can't find enough people the first time around, you go back out and ask, and, and it shouldn't be two people running a commission.
Well, so this is, this is Margaret's report. You asked to ask a question.
I, yes, I.
And now you're commenting on it. So, all right. Mickey?
Okay. There's going to be a fun kayak event at August 9th. They haven't had one in a while, and it's put on by three different entities, the Grozil Nature and Land Conservancy, Friends of Detroit River, and Downriver Link Greenways. If you go on the G-I-N-L-C website, you'll find out more details, but it's August 9th. For the Fire Department, their next meeting is on August 14th, but I want to do a special thank you to members of the EMS group. I had a family member get pretty sick, and they were extremely helpful and, you know, did the blood pressure and, and all the checks and everything else, and they waited until the person was feeling better before they made fun of me and called me a mama bear. But I want to thank them regardless. They were amazing and also gave me a tip on those liquid IVs that, like, turned them around. So thank you, you guys. Open space, we have a meeting tomorrow. There's going to be a report from an Eagle Scout. We're going to talk about our communications plan. We're going to also talk, or I'm going to talk about some encroachments that I've seen that are, are highly disturbing on open space. I just want to say, I do want to thank Ray for bringing up that issue with the bidding. We all have different methods and ways that we do bidding, and I was one that wanted them to get another three-year agreement. I think that is everything for me.
Okay. Over to you, Bill.
Thank you. The Airport Commission is a busy place. I have not talked to Janelle recently. I gave her some time. She had some catching up to do, and it's about time I get back to her. But I did have communication with them. I was amazed that there was a piece of concrete on the runway that buckled. It was huge. I did not expect it to be as big as it was. And Charlie Compo came along at a reasonable price, and they were thrilled at how quick he did it at a reasonable cost. And I'm going to get back to that comment about bidding, though. I, I'm not blessing Charlie like the others here tonight. Planning has been busy. We know that their minds have been focused on this. I believe that we will be learning how to use that plan and its guidance. We will refine it to our purpose. And, and I'm, those people care enough, I think they'd share their time with us at a meeting if we ever had to ask questions or could call and, and ask for some advice from Jay Furchie or Eric or John. I want to comment a bit about Kevin's remarks regarding the, the bidding. Most of my working life, I insured businesses. And I can remember one day I was in a contractor's office, and the office, the main executives were all in one big room, and we were discussing the affairs of the insurance. And this other fellow facing another wall swore loudly and says, "No, I'm not going to do it." And the question was, "What?" He says, "They want another blanket-lag bid again." Well, why not? We've given them five bids, and they always give it to the same guy, and they use us to drive the, the other guy down. The, the other guy, they show our bid to the other guy to let him make it lower. I'm not going to do it anymore. Well, here was a guy that, that we had a principle to guide from. If it, if there's a reputation among bidders that, that they're not going to get the bid, they could come up with a new idea, a new product that does the same job better. Would never know about it, would just have that one guy doing it his way. I think new information from time to time is a good business practice, and I wanted to put that comment in there.
All right.
I'm done.
Thank you, Bill. Over to you, Mark, with the final word.
I will be brief. We have two potential variances coming up to us in August. I think it's 26th is our next meeting date. We also have an appeal tentatively scheduled for that day as well, that's regarding the Gulf Shores, or West, West Shores, I'm sorry, West Shores Golf Course and Dr. Lautzig. Other than that, that may be get pushed back till September. And then, as you've heard through this, this planning commission, I mean, sorry, the master plan, once, once that is adopted and approved, then we're going to be busy looking at different zoning issues and, and having things changed to, to conform with the plan. So things are going to start stepping up a little bit for our zoning board. And again, I wanted to thank all of our commissioners and all of the commissions for what they do. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Township Manager.
Good evening. Just a quick few items. The Township received in the RFPs for the Cell Tower Legal Services Proposals. Those will be on the agenda likely for the 28th. We received five. The RFP was redesigned slightly to focus more on the core legal services of negotiating the contracts. So I think the responses we received will be more in line with what kind of services we're looking for. So those will be in the packet for consideration on the 28th, and then we can have a conversation about where we go from there, whether we want to conduct interviews with the various firms. But just want to let you know that, that, that's the status for that RFP receipt. A couple of different congratulations this evening. First, I want to congratulate the Board in the establishment, establishment of the Toll Bridge Commission. I, I don't think that that was any kind of a small feat to put that together, not only in formulating the ordinance, but also populating the commission with members. I, I thought the Board did an excellent job in, in finding excellent candidates, and, and I'm really looking forward to working with that group. As I mentioned to them during our break, we'll probably have our meetings on Wednesdays because the Boardroom is available on that day, and we'll get going with setting up a schedule and, and getting that commission up and running. They surely have a lot of work to do, so looking forward to that. Along the lines of congratulations, and, and this is a little bit self-serving, but Brian has a couple of nephews, and I have my son on a team that played this evening for JIRA, Grozil Youth Recreation Association. The 15 and under boys' baseball team won the district championship tonight against Wyandotte. So there were, I think, 30 or 35 different teams in that district, from all different communities, all the way from Rockwood all the way to, to Wyandotte. So very impressive season for them, capped off with a, a championship. So, and then last but not least, I did speak with the Chairman of the Greenways Open Space Commission. They're looking at having Dump the Junk probably in September. So just want to let residents know because we've had a lot of phone calls whether we're going to have one this year, and I believe that they are, but it might be a little bit, just a little bit later this year. So.
We'll talk tomorrow about it.
Sounds good. That's all I have. Thank you.
If you sent Bill Stevenson a picture, you'll get that picture in the paper.
Oh, yeah, maybe I'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple of things from the Supervisor's Arena. End of correction. I told the Bridge Commissioners that were seated here tonight that we would swear them in next meeting. We actually don't swear in Commissioners, so I'll have to write them all an email. And then I'm sure they can do introductions at their first meeting. I, I wanted to mention, I think that the Township Board did a great job tonight. So this was a very robust agenda, but I think it's probably the biggest one we've had so far. And everybody was, I don't think concise is the right word, laconic, stating exactly what they wanted to state in a way that was brief and made sense to everybody. So I just appreciate the Board's, you know, professionalism and, and willingness to work together this evening. And then regarding Supervisor Porcelli, he is not dead. I have not usurped him. He will be returning shortly. He's just on a, a bit of personal relief, so. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Can I?
Question?
Wait, I'm sorry. What, what? Do we have public comments still?
Public.
Oh, yeah. Public comment. Well, first of all, let, first of all, say, I would like to say thank you very much to Clerk Jaeger for running a very, very smooth meeting. Thank you. And I also would like to say, and I, I feel badly that I, I would like to thank the Plan, Planning Commission for all the hard work that they have put in over the last two, two and a half years to get all of this put together and to this point. Thank them very, very much. And I would like to also point out that the two people, our Finance Director and our Township Manager have pushed and pulled and gotten us to this point where I think the bridge, we're, we're very, we're in, at this time, I think we're in good hands, and fingers crossed everything will continue. And thank you too for all the hours over time that you have put in for it. Thank you.
Okay. Brian, do you want to forward them to me so you can go home?
No. I'm good. There's not that. I mean, there's, it shouldn't take that long.
Unfortunately, the five of you are stuck till the end of the meeting. Okay, go ahead, Brian.
All right. First up, Christine Davis Boucher. I urge the Board to send back the master plan to the commission that they have adopted. I feel it should go back and address the original action items. I'm against the new master plan for several reasons, especially after watching the latest mass Planning Commission meeting. Yes, the commission have spent long hours working on this new addition, but even some commissioners expressed concern, but they voted for it anyway. At that meeting, the priest from Sacred Heart presented a plan for senior housing and senior care facility on their land. He was told to file the proper paperwork and go from there. This is something there that should be included in the master plan, and we desperately need this for our community with the population aging. I personally know of two different people filling out paperwork, and the commission kept asking for more paperwork, ending up costs both parties over $80,000 to comply with the Commissioner's requirements. One after, one after over two years was approved, the other denied. We need more housing or condos for seniors and young professionals, more smaller lots, so more affordable housing for young families. The 2024 was a bit better. We are unique. Let's see our township thrive. I was surprised to see the day after the meeting, the master plan link was posted on Code Red. I wrote Supervisor Porcelli with no answer regarding putting it out on an emergency service, yet within hours, Brian Frill posted it on several sites on social media. Please remember, many seniors, especially men, do not do social media. I strongly urge the Board to vote no and send it back to the commission. Only 10 more. All right. Rhonda Bradford Island Boulevard. We strongly encourage you to not approve the master plan in its current form. Several actions are critical to an improved Grozil in the future. Please reinstate recommendations to support ADUs, PDUs, pre-approved building plans, and buyright options. Additionally, improve transparency, including public input and clear documentation. Aversions and changes help to make our beloved Grozil maintain its treasured status. Thanks for your consideration. Lee Kraus. Please be respectful of the many islanders that shared their ideas regarding the master plan. That is the least you can do. Jeanette Grande East River. A lot of work has been done on the master plan and is appreciated, however, there is more to be done. Please do not think you have to pass it tonight. What's the difference stepping back and fine tuning? You all know things have been left out that will benefit young and old and include the taxpayers in decision-making. We have waited a number of years to update, so step back. Not tonight. Say no, not tonight. Writing errors alone must be corrected. Who edits documents that represent our township? Plus, if there is no way to be more succinct and fewer pages, unfortunately, very few, including myself, will or have read every sentence. Just saying for tonight, just say no. All right. Next up, John Leon and Roberta Urbani. In order, save time and not be repetitive, I support Kyle DeBose's suggestion on delaying the vote on the master plan or implementing the written suggested changes he has supplied to the Township Board and Commission. Bruce Markwart. We support Kyle DeBose's position, the master plan. Don't be in a hurry to approve the plan as revised. He was West River Road. Devra Stevens Bellevue. I am writing to respectfully urge you not to adopt the master plan in its current form without restoring several key action items that were in the Smith Group's original recommendation. I am a Sacred Heart parishioner and member of its Finance Committee. One particular item I would like to see restored is the use of Planned Unit Development or PUDs. This zoning tool offers a flexible approach to land development that allows for a mix of uses and densities, often deviating from traditional zoning regulations, but intended to encourage innova, innovative site planning and design. They often incorporate public benefits like open space and amenities that might not be possible under the standard zoning. The inclusion of this would, this, the inclusion of this option would enable new housing types while preserving open space. Sacred Heart Catholic Church would like to see several parcels of its property rezoned to allow for a continuum of care for seniors. From single-story units to assisted living, a PUD would provide the township the flexibility to plan on building size, elevations, landscaping, and parking. Thank you for consideration of amending the master plan before its final adoption. Gerald Gat Island Drive. I would like to offer my concerns that the master plan is not ready for vote this evening. I am concerned that there are critical items that have been removed and are key to maintain a proper level of transparency. I personally have deep concerns that the zoning process has not changed and that public opinion is key to the process. It seems that there is not, just not enough communication regarding projects that require zoning changes and that public comments helps maintain the balance between developers and Ken Yipe. I'm writing to respectfully urge you not to adopt the master plan in its current form without restoring several key action items that were in the Smith Group's original recommendation. I am a Sacred Heart parishioner and member of its Finance Committee. One particular item I would like to see restored is the use of Planned Unit Development or PUDs. This zoning tool offers a flexible approach to land development that allows for a mix of uses and densities, often deviating from traditional zoning regulations, but intended to encourage innovative site planning and design. They often incorporate public benefits like open space or amenities that would not be possible under standard zoning. The inclusion of this option would enable new housing types while preserving open space. Sacred Heart Catholic Church would like, like to see several parcels in its property rezoned to allow for a continuum of care for seniors. From single-story units to assisted living, a PUD would provide the township the flexibility to plan on building size, elevations, landscaping, and parking. Thank you for your consideration of amending this master plan before its final adoption. And Ken Yipe is on East River Road. Mary Brejnaan Bellevue. The community has recently informed, the community was recently informed of the master plan that looked at community surveys, group interaction, and overall concerns with residents was altered in some shape or form. At that time, the community was informed via a Code Red alert and Facebook to view the document. The master plan is over 150 pages long and does not alert any resident as to what was altered or taken out of the plan. I myself felt that it was very cumbersome to go through the document with a fine-toothed comb. Moreover, I didn't have the original plan to compare it to. I'm sure most residents were not going to take the time to go through 150-plus pages to see what they liked and didn't like. It was presented to the community in a very confusing way. The master plan is an important framework for this community that needs to be explained thoroughly, thoughtfully, of what changes will take place in this community in simple terms. I don't give the residents a book to look at with reading material that is laborious and hard to understand. Please send this back to the Complaint Commission for further understanding in this community. The residents need to understand and appreciate the efforts that have gone into this plan. Okay, next. This is going to sound very familiar. Gary Latendrice Hawthorne Glen Drive. I'm writing to respectfully urge you not to adopt the master plan in its current form without restoring several key action items that were in the Smith Group's original recommendation. I am a Sacred Heart parishioner and member of its Finance Committee. One particular item I would like to see restored is the use of Planned Unit Development or PUDs. This zoning tool offers a flexible approach to land development that allows This zoning tool offers a flexible approach to land development that allows for a mix of uses and densities, often deviating from traditional zoning regulations but intended to encourage innovative site planning and design. They often incorporate public benefits like open space and amenities that might not be possible under standard zoning. This inclusion is, the inclusion of this option would enable new housing types while preserving open space. Sacred Heart Catholic Church would like to see several parcels of its property rezoned to allow for a continuum of care for seniors with single-story units to assisted living. A PUD would provide the Township with flexibility to plan on building size, elevations, landscaping, and parking. I am able to see the demand of accessible and affordable senior housing as President and Treasurer of the 124 condos that compromise Hawthorne Place Condo Association. Hardly a week goes by without someone inquiring if we have any single-story condos for sale. The need is real. Thank you for your consideration of amending the master plan before its final adoption." I think I, I think I got them all.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you, residents who commented and emailed, and congratulations to the JIRA U-15 baseball team. So I apologize that your fathers were not there to watch you watch this trip, so. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.